I would like to verify your presence. Please turn on your cameras and see your presence. Trustee, uh, Mr. Murphy.
Uh, I am here, yeah.
Uh, trustee Kelly, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, trustee Filbert?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
You trustee McGuire? Trustee Yaboa?
Present.
Oh, sorry, trustee Filbert, Filbert, trustee Filbert. Are you there?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm here.
Sounds good, thanks. Call to order, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, March eighteen, twenty twenty-five. I hope all our students, staff, and administrators, and trustees have had a very nice March break and welcome back to everyone. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees, in order to be recognized, please use the handoff feature in Teams to be automatically placed in queue. And please remember to turn your mics on when you speak. Item one point one, land acknowledgement, opening prayer, Our Father, and the National Anthem. Now our staff to please lead us, start, start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today...
Is rich in the history and modern traditions...
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe...
To the Atawandran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surrounding me greatly...
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today...
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings...
Call us in solidarity...
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
And animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank...
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you, student trustee Filbert. Could you please lead us in the opening prayer, Our Father and National Anthem?
Hello, everybody, I hope you're all sounding a bit more well than I am, but I'd love to have everybody come together in our opening prayer. So if you could please join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen? God of love, through this Lenten journey, purify my desires to serve you. Free me from any temptations to judge others, to place myself above others. Please let me surrender even my impatience and allow me to be productive in serving my HCSB community. As I journey through Lent, let me remember the feast you have prepared for me in the resurrection and let me be filled with thanks to you. Now if you could please join me in the Our Father, Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, amen? In the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen?
Thank you, student trustee Filbert. Item one point two, motions arising from in-camera, there were no motions from the in-camera sessions that will require a vote in the public session. Our next order of business is approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions, deletions, corrections to the agenda? And do trustees want any item removed from the consent agenda?
Through you, Mr. Chair. A privilege?
Sure.
As you can see, I have no technology, so it's either user error or technology issue. I'm not quite sure which one it is, so how would you like me to raise my hand?
Raise your hand.
Raise my hand physically? Okay, thank you.
Turn your mic on.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ochan Chanara. Are there any further additions? Are there any additions, corrections? Seeing none, may I have a mover to approve the agenda? Moved by trustee Agnew, looking for a second, trustee Powell. All in favor, oh, sorry, I'll take it to recorded vote, sorry. Okay, trustee Ochan Chanara?
I'm in favor.
Uh, Vaisha Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Favor, trustee Agnew? Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee Yaboa?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire there? No? Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
We have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries, the agenda is approved. Uh, we move on to declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest we declared tonight? Seeing none, we shall move on to our next order of business, which is presentations. Item four point one, senior staff updates, graduation coach for Black students, uh, update and symposium twenty twenty-five, Director Klein, please introduce the presentation.
Thank you, Chair, I'm going to call upon, uh, Mrs. Jairama to move forward with this. We just finished, seems like a long time ago, but it wasn't that long ago, the month of February, which is traditionally dedicated to celebrating, uh, Black history, Black achievement, uh, throughout the world and certainly within the Canadian context. And, um, February was a great month for celebrating that, not that we restricted to that month, of course. Uh, but we'd like to highlight a couple of things, uh, and one is while we still have her, our Black graduation coach and the work that's been done, uh, and the work that I think has sparked a lot of interest, uh, in terms of the impact that we've seen. Uh, and as well, talk about at least one of the great, uh, events, which is for the second year in a row, second year too, uh, a symposium, uh, that also took place. So I'll turn it over and, uh, again, look forward to hearing again what is another set of, uh, great news and celebration and joy.
Good evening and, um, thank you Director Klein and through you, Mr. Chair. So we're really pleased to share updates, as Director Klein mentioned, on the graduation program for Black students. That's currently in its third school year of implementation, as well as the recently held Black Excellence Symposium, and the focus was empowering futures. Uh, we have here with us, um, Akisha Newton-Williams, who was the graduation coach, who's primarily supporting students at Saint Francis Xavier and has recently begun, uh, supporting students at Saint Coterie as well. We are also joined by Amanda Gonzalez, the curriculum consultant, and who was really, um, you know, the lead or who spearheaded the Black Excellence Symposium. They'll be sharing some highlights of the program and the symposium and how it has impacted student experience. Thank you, and over to you.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Next slide, please. So, as Seda mentioned, this is the third academic year, or actually two and a half, um, academic year of the graduation coach for Black students. And in the process of developing the program, I came up with a tiered academic support model, just to, um, conceptualize how I support students. So as you can see, um, tier one is universal, so about seventy percent of the students that I support fall under the universal support. So, um, something that I recently started was the early, um, intervention or early introduction of the graduation coach program, which is a support, um, transition program for our grade eight students. So along with attending the transition meetings, um, through Student Success, I also attend, uh, the each elementary school to meet the grade eights that are coming in to Saint Francis Xavier for grade nine. Um, along with that, those students are invited to our summer program, because as you all know, I am a twelve-month employee, so I support students over March break and summer. So we had a few grade nines come out to, um, the summer program. Uh, for tier two, I would say about twenty-five percent of the students fall in, um, the tier two support. Those are students that may have, um, attendance issues, maybe credit deficit. And in that support, I give them leadership opportunities, work really closely with all the alt ed program to see how we can get some of those credits recovered. And I would say maybe about five percent of the students that I support are intensive, and those are the ones that require very individualized support. Um, so over the years, I've built some great connections with some of our community partners, Halton Black Voices, Roots Community Services. Um, newly introduced is One Voice One Team, who's providing a grade nine and ten leadership program for our male identifying students. And we have about twenty students that are participating in that. Today was their fifth session, um, they have two more to go. CCAH and also Rising Stars, who has helped with some leadership training as well for, um, the symposium. Please. So some of the success indicators, um, for the program is our very strong presence in the school community. Um, these lockers that you see are a bank of fourteen lockers, seventeen lockers, sorry, um, outside of the graduation coach room that, um, are, one of our VPs actually came up with this idea. So these represent different books by Black authors, and these books are also available in our library and in, um, our classroom library as well. Um, we have an increased number of students interested in leadership roles. Um, a lot of our students are asking to be involved with DECA, um, taking on leadership roles in our Black Student Union and other clubs in the school. Our grade nine support has increased to approximately twenty-five students, which is amazing. Um, as I mentioned, we have about twenty students taking part in the grade nine and ten leadership program. Right now, I'm supporting approximately ninety students from grade nine to twelve, and again, from different aspects from tier one to tier three, and also programming and workshops from thirteen different organizations. And this year, which is going to be our third graduating class through the graduation coach program, will have approximately sixty Kente stools. Next, please. And next, we just have a quick video, um, of student voice from some of our students.
School Wednesday programs that like helped me understand like what it's like to be challenged in the school and how to, and having someone to advocate for me, to help, you know, keep me on track. And, uh, also, I love how we get to have these special events like symposium and, uh, field trip, special field trips depending on if you're a big girl or not.
I've benefited from the graduation coach program because I've always felt that within the school, there is something and a special place that I can go to connect with people who look like me, learn more about my cultures, and have a space that cares about my well-being and my specific success as a Black student.
Down, four, down, five, six, down, seven, down, eight.
I think BSU's been my school life in the sense that it has given me a welcoming community to come to. As a new student in the school, it's given me a bunch of people and the, and our counselor to always come to in times of need, whenever I needed people to talk to, and just a good friendship community in general.
My favorite part about the Graduation Coach Program is having a space where I feel comfortable and connected, and also all the opportunities I have gotten from it. And another thing is how she really helped me figure out what I wanted to do post-secondary, because I truly feel like if it wasn't for her, I would still be lost.
So the Grad Coach Program has really helped me embrace my Black inner excellence. It has really helped me with my mental health, my physical health, and my education overall. And I can, I hope to continue being perseverant through adversity and all other obstacles throughout my life. And thank you.
So in grade twelve, I've learned that there's two perspectives in life. There's the interior and there's the exterior. But I've always knew that too much of something is never good. So what people need in life is a balance. And that's where Ms. Akisha and the Grad Coach Program comes into place, because, um, it's allowed me to connect with the people around me while embracing who I am on the inside. And all my years of high school, I was not the best student academically, but in grade twelve, I started taking things serious because I seen how important my future was and how much Ms. Akisha wanted to see me succeed. So I'm thankful for the Grad Coach Program. I'm thankful for people like Ms. Akisha in my life. And, um, it's because of her, she allowed me to connect with the people around me. And, yeah, shout out to BSU.
I think that was the first time I watched it. I watched it so many times that I get emotional every time. Yeah, so that's been the impact on the students at Saint Francis Xavier, but also the graduation coach program has also had a very positive impact on the system. The work of dismantling anti-black racism is inherently tied to HCSB's new multi-year strategic plan for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight. In addition to the Black Student Unions, Black Student Associations present in all of our secondary schools, the creation of our board-wide BSU, which is called, um, Be Us, Black Empowered United Students, has extended the support of the graduation coach program across the system. So this group meets, um, monthly, and it highlight, the highlights include HCSB's first Black Excellence Symposium, which was last year, twenty twenty-four, uh, which included students that participate in our Black, our Black Student Unions. This year, we had our second, uh, Black Excellence Symposium, which the theme was Empowering Futures. And for the first time, we will be having a parent and caregiver Black Excellence Symposium, creating a legacy building, and that will be on April tenth, also at Saint Francis Xavier. Further, the amplification of student voice is present in the Black History Three Sixty Five Committee, a committee of educators and board staff committed to incorporating Black history, Black identity, Black joy, and excellence into curriculum three hundred and sixty-five days of the year. Thank you so much, Akisha, and good evening, everyone. The Black Excellence Symposium, Empowering Futures, took place February twentieth at Saint Francis Xavier Catholic Secondary School. Had two hundred and fifty-five students attend from all ten of our high schools. Next slide. And as mentioned, this is the second year that we've been able to run the symposium. And as Akisha said, we're really excited for April tenth, uh, which is the parent symposium. Um, and both symposiums, the student symposium and the caregiver symposium, support the board-wide theme for Black History Month, which was Black Futures. So information, uh, including the invitation registration link will be sent to families via center mail in the coming weeks, so that all families will be aware of the event and can attend. Next slide, please. So the focus of, um, the Black Excellence Symposium, like Amanda said, was empowering futures. And we are very intentional about what kind of workshops we wanted to incorporate. Um, we used the feedback from our student, from our students that participated last year and the students that are a part of our board-wide BSU, um, to, to, to formulate which workshops we wanted to include. So our morning workshops included artistic expression, pathways, experiential, um, opportunities, identity-affirming workshops, and mental health and wellness. So this year, we had twelve workshops opposed to nine workshops last year. In the afternoon, we had, sorry, in the afternoon, uh, we had our students participate in some leadership and team-building activities, and that was led by some of the, uh, Saint Francis Xavier students. The sessions were set up in a way that even though students were only able to participate in two of the twelve sessions, knowing that all of the facilitators and all of these workshops are available to students throughout the year if their BSU or BSA feels so inclined based on interest and need. Slide. The huge thank you to all of our facilitators and our sponsors, especially Hall Black Voices and the Hallton region. I also want to extend a huge thank you to all of the departments who contributed to making this event happen, including Curriculum, the Office of Human Rights and Equity, Special Education, Student Success, and School Services. And lastly, I'd like to shout out Saint Francis Xavier. I'd like to thank both the staff and the admin there for hosting and supporting. And thank you to all administrators and all staff, advisors, and supervisors for your ongoing support of these crucial third spaces in our schools. Next slide. So this is some of the feedback that we received from students. And as, I'm not going to read all of them, um, but as you can kind of look at some of the feedback, you'll notice that a lot of it is around positivity in relation to feeling a sense of connection, a sense of belonging and being able to gather in community. And some additional feedback from staff, and I'll read out some quotes to you. Quote, "The students' mental health and well-being appeared to be positive as they remained engaged and connected throughout the day." Quote, "I only saw joy and appreciation. It was great to have a day for students to be with each other, be validated with the variety of workshop presenters, because representation matters. I know my students loved it, and so did the other students from other schools. You could just tell and feel the vibe throughout the day." Right? Lastly, these are just some photos of the day. Food was amazing. Really great energy, even feedback from the facilitators has been overwhelmingly positive. The next slide. Uh, just an image of, of students. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your presentations. I shall now open up the floor to trustees for questions, comments. Uh, trustee Ochan Chanara?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, it's amazing, thank you, ladies. To watch that slide that shows how it's grown from twenty twenty-two to now is incredible, right? Time just goes by, and when you look back, that's where you see how much growth and how it will continue to grow. So I remember the days where it was back in twenty twenty-two, which is the BSU and BSA. So, well done, and I hope we continue, those slides get wider where you have to print it on legal paper. We've printed any one.
Thank you. Trustee, uh, Agnew?
I just wanted to say, you know, congratulations, I'm a big fan of what you do. And I had the chance to attend the symposium last year, unfortunately, I didn't attend this year, it was away. But you could just feel it, you could feel the excitement, you could feel the camaraderie, you could feel the inspiration. Um, and that's such a large part to the work that you're both doing. And Akisha just, I mean, I can see why you tear up every time you see that, because to know that you've made fundamentally such a difference, um, to someone's life. I, I'm a big fan of even if we only help one person, we've made a big difference, so, um, congratulations. And I agree, I, I look forward to seeing it only grow and expand from here.
Thank you, I see no other hand up, so, so I must thank, uh, Ms. Jeraman and your team, uh, Ms. Gonzalez, and Ms. Akisha Newton-Williams, their presentation. Thanks for the wonderful work you have been doing with our students over the years. And please, please keep it up, and we look forward to the parent symposium. Uh, please keep the board of trustees updated with, uh, with, with the, uh, positive outcome and, uh... Okay, so, thanks so much once again. We now move on to item number five, delegations. There are no delegations, item number six, which is our next order of business, consent agenda. The following items have been agreed upon at the consent, at the agenda approval to stay on the consent agenda. Can we have that, have that up, please? Okay, so item six point one, action items, six point one point one and six point two is noted items. There will be a single motion to approve the action items, and there will be no discussion. Uh, I will read the motion, resolved at the Halton Catholic District School Board, approve consent agenda item six point one point one, as submitted at the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, uh, regular board meeting. Looking for a mover, please? Uh, trustee Powell Moos, looking for a second there? Trustee Carabella seconds, I'll take this to a recorded vote. Uh, Vaisha Murphy? Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Gonzalez?
Favor.
Trustee Agnew? Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Yaboa?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Ochan Chanara?
In favor.
So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries, the consent agenda is approved. Move on directly to action items. Item nine point one. Nine point one. 9.1. Action items, 9.1. Good. Request to use, request for use of 2024-25 unallocated reserves. This item was shared at a last board meeting, is a staff report, and is now an action item. Superintendent Loft, please speak to this item, and then I will read, I will read the motion and place it on the table for trustees.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Nothing has changed since we brought this forward, everyone, as a staff report at the last meeting. So what you'll find is a request to use the unallocated 2425, sorry, for use in 2425, the unallocated reserves from prior year. Again, just to reiterate, it was billing security upgrades 100, tenant support 250, and tech upgrades of 614.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. I will read the motion, get it moved, seconded, and place it on the table for trustees. Can I have the motion up, please? Yeah. Resolved the Hallton Catholic District School Board, approve the allocation of $964,000 from unallocated reserves to support security upgrades in the amount of $100,000, attendance support in the amount of $250,000, and technology upgrades in the amount of $614,000. May I have a mover for this item, please? Moved by trustee O'Hearn Chanada. Looking for a seconder. All right, trustee. Trustee Powell, second it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee Carabella.
Yes, I'm asking that according to our Bylaw 10.12, to divide this motion into three separate parts.
Thank you. Thank you for letting trustees know in advance, too. So we will need to, we can definitely follow Bylaw 10.12, which is subdivision of the question. We will have to restructure the main motion. This is the main motion. We'll have to restructure this into three different parts. So I've got some, the motion. Can we put that motion up on screen? There will be no discussion on this item, on this request. So. On the request. So trustees, you see, the main motion has been broken up into three parts as requested. The first part is for the $100,000, then $250,000 and $614,000. So it has been moved, the whole motion has been moved and seconded. So one move and a seconder. We do not need a move and seconder for each one. So now we will take up each item, and then we will discuss, debate, and vote on each item. Sounds good? So we'll take up the first item. Resolve that the Hallton Catholic District School Board approve the allocation of $100,000 from unallocated reserves to support security upgrades. I shall now open up the floor to trustees for questions. Question time, and then we'll do debate time for each of them. Okay? So trustees, hand up trustee Saunders. We're opening up question time for item number one only.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Chair. Can you just remind me why we're going into reserves for something that appears to be like an operational expenditure and why we didn't, wouldn't just put it into our upcoming budget calculations? If you just sort of give me an idea why we're having to do this.
Assistant Superintendent Loft.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Saunders. As discussed before, this is a one-and-done type expenditure that we need to have. It's something that, it's not ongoing, it's, we need to have the security upgrade for our building security information systems, which is why we're bringing it here. We would just have to go further into further years if we don't. It hasn't been budgeted, we didn't have the budget to do this.
Trustee Saunders, next question. Any other trustees have questions? Uh, trustee O'Hearn Chanada.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Loft. This is upgrading security at all of our buildings, right? Or is it just secondary, elementary, or pieces of it?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee O'Horn Zerota. It's all our buildings, I shouldn't say, some may already have it, like some of our newer buildings might have already been upgraded to it when we built them. Actually, all right. Or Ryan can give you a better answer than that.
Superintendent Mike.
Good. Through you, Mr. Chair. So we've been doing this over a number of years. A lot of our buildings right now, we have, we need two systems for communication out of our buildings. These is internet and then cell service. A lot of them are still on old 3G service, which is not modern anymore. We're upgrading to 5G. We've been doing it over a number of years. Last year, when we had so many cuts in our budget, we had to cut about $4 million out of our budget. These are things that we had to defer to future years. So we have a chance now to catch up on those, because we had a bit of a surplus last year. So we can do that, or we can, like trustee, or trustee, superintendent Loft said, we can defer it again to future years and just put it off till future years when we have the funds to do those.
So clarifying question. So once we do this and spend the $100,000, in our best knowledge, because it keeps changing, we'll be up to date.
It'll be up to current standards, and then total standards change again, but yeah.
I understand, okay.
Other questions? Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you. So how old is the system then that we're upgrading? Like, I know you guys understand 3G, but what is it? Is it five years old or 10 years old?
Probably closer to like 10 to 20 years old, depending on the system. So it'll vary quite a bit, but it's trying to get a number of, it won't be all of our schools. It'll be probably, you know, this is probably like five to seven schools, depending on their, on the platform they're on right now, and upgraded to current standard, and we'll keep doing more and more in future years as well.
Thank you, trustee Carabella.
Okay, I'm sorry to ask this question again, because I know it's gone around. So if we didn't take this from unallocated reserves, where would we get it from? Like, the next budget?
Superintendent Loft.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and trustee Carabella. Yeah, we wouldn't do it right now, and we'd have to look at a slower implementation of it in future budgets, so.
Trustee Carabella. Any further questions? It's question time. Thank you. Trustee Kennedy, you're up next.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering, when did we maybe realize we might have needed to upgrade the systems?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we've been doing it over a number of years. We're doing a kind of a set amount each year, but we did do any last year. So this would be a chance to catch up on the ones that we didn't do last year.
So we did revise budget in December. I just don't know why we couldn't have included only $100,000. When we revised other numbers, like PD by 1.1 million up, why couldn't we have added $100,000 for security upgrades at that time?
Uh, Superintendent Mike.
Yeah, we're constantly constrained on the funds that we have. And unless we cut other services, we can't add more things in, so that's.
Trustee Kennedy, go ahead. Next question, done. Thank you. Any other trustees have questions? Shall close question time, open up debate time. The trustees want to debate on this item, or should I call it, call the vote? Trustee Kennedy. Go ahead.
Yeah, so my concern is, you know, we had a recent budget revised estimates in December. That was only two months ago, because this actually came out in February. I don't think $100,000 was a lot to put in there. My concern is, you know, reserves should be for emergencies. If there's something we need to fix that we don't have the imminent cash flow to do, we can use reserves. And this is kind of a, this is kind of a precedent to be, from what I've seen so far in this term, to in the middle of the year, to take from reserves. If we don't do this from reserves, all three of these items, we probably will have a deficit budget, which I know we don't want to have. And it's really a way of, you know, accounting for the fact that we really do have a deficit by doing this. We're just pulling the money early. So I don't, I don't really think that's appropriate. I'm willing to vote for this right now if we can find a way to do it from existing budgets. And again, I just mentioned if PD went up $1.1 million or 70% in December, I feel like we probably could have found $100,000 to fund this. So I won't be supporting this.
Thank you. Director Klein would like to.
Just a point of clarification, I'm confused where the 1.1 million up in PD, so in December.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Director Klein, you done your question?
I don't know if that's accurate.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy would like to respond to that.
So the June budget had 1.55 million, December had 2.63 million, which is 1.1 million in, over the summer into December. So, you know, that was money that must have been found from somewhere. And I think if we knew about these issues many years, we probably could have used some of that money. Among the other items, too.
Sure. Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Director Klein.
Sure, for accuracy's sake, I'm going to look at Superintendent Kroll, since a lot of the PD comes under his.
Yeah, and I can't speak to the exact numbers, because I wasn't prepared for this question. But I can tell you that with the new early literacy reading screener, there was specific ministry money allocated only for that purpose that couldn't be used for an upgrade like this. So when we're throwing around monies like increases around 1.1 million, I think the context is really important and understanding that certain ministry funds are specifically earmarked for specific ministry initiatives and can't be used for things like this. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I do not see any other trustees hand up. You had your debate time. So, thank you. With that, we shall now, I shall now call the vote on the first part. The motion that you see on the screen, resolved the Hallton Catholic District School Board, approved, approves the allocation of $100,000 from unallocated reserves to support security upgrades. The main motion was moved by trustee O'Hearn Chanada, seconded by trustee Powell. With that, I shall now call the vote. Trustee Kelly, how do you vote on this item?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Filbert.
In favor.
The Yebua.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
Opposed.
Trustee Powell. The Kennedy.
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hearn Chanada.
I'm in favor of security, so in favor.
Trustee Murphy, Vice Chair Murphy.
Opposed.
And trustee Duarte is in favor. We have five in favor, four opposed, motion carries. Shall now move on to the second part of the main motion. I shall now read the motion. Resolved the Hallton Catholic District School Board, approve the allocation of $250,000 from unallocated reserves to support attendance support. The main motion was moved by trustee O'Hearn Chanada, seconded by trustee Powell. With that, I shall now open up the floor to question time for trustees. Trustees, please put your hand up. Trustee O'Hearn Chanada, to the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Klein or Superintendent Loft. So the $250,000 to support attendance support. So can someone give me a high level between current state and what future state would look like with this support? So I understand it's two positions, and I was on a call that talked about all this a little while ago. But what does current versus future look like with this, this money being spent?
Director Klein.
Yeah, I'll, first of all, I'll start by just saying that this stems from, and I think it's probably already noted before by Superintendent Oldman, by a PPM that came at the end of last school year, PPM 171, that within that requires boards to have programs, right? So I think, and like a lot of other things, like oftentimes, there's no money that goes with it. So then it's incumbent upon boards to ensure that they're creating these and that they're funding these. In terms of the status quo and where we're looking at in order to actualize this, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Oldman.
Through you, Chair.
Go ahead, Superintendent Oldman.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. Further to Director Klein's comments, I think what's really important is that I think we've repeatedly through our budgetary processes, highlighted a significant and notable gap and strain on our system, which is the increasing rise of sick leave utilization. So while attendance support is a function that certainly manages the requirements under PPM 171 and that of the Attendance Support Program that the board does have in existence already. So thankfully, and the good news here is that we're already steps ahead in terms of many boards in meeting the PPM requirements, which are expected by June of 2026. But I think further to that is really what, what the individuals in the Attendance Support Office actually, what they do every day. And it's critical work, and it really has a direct impact on, on student learning, perhaps student achievement, and their experience in choice to be Hallton Catholic students and part of our community. I think it's not just about attendance support, it is about managing the cost. I think we've talked about it. I think there's been notable comments from trustees in this room about the, the growing cost. In 2019, the cost of sick leave looked about $12 million on our budget. And that's not including replacement costs of those who do go off. Last year, we know that we were at 25 and change, million, 25 million. That's more than double by quick math. I think in order to expect a change to our budgetary pressures in the absence of a sick leave program that has been changed, which is bargained provincially, it's not bargained at the local level. I don't have any degree or impact on, on being able to change that program. I think the only reasonable way where we can maybe perhaps make an impact and reinvest that money back into perhaps our schools and our programming would be through investing in the staff who do this work. I quickly parallel it to say if our enrollment was increasing, we would respond with staff. And we wouldn't expect student achievement outcomes to improve without that response. So I would like to think that there's a similar parallel here. If we're in a crisis, I don't think that's been disputed at this table. I think it would be appropriate for us to respond. It is about attendance support, but it's also about the financial and fiscal pressures that we're under here. And I think in order to be responsive and adaptive, this is one solution in the absence of other tools, which would be, you know, being able to bargain a revised sick leave plan. We don't have that tool at our disposal, this is one that we do.
Thank you. Trustee O'Hearn Chanada, question, question time, keep asking questions.
Yep, thank you. I do have a follow-up. Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. So I guess, I'm looking at it, so I'm looking at it from a lens, I'm not a teacher, I've never been a teacher, and you're looking at this, and I guess I'm trying to get a feel for, is it going to help get at the root cause, like not just the numbers that are absent, but what's going on? It, does this help with that?
Superintendent Oldman.
And I think that's, so through you, Chair. I think that's why I noted that the overarching ability for us to make meaningful change and large-scale change is certainly with a revised sick leave program. This one, I professionally and personally don't believe is sustainable for this province. I think that's out of Hallton Catholic experience. And that's not at any point in criticism for those utilizing the program. I think there's, there's good reason why we have these programs. I think the design of the current one is not in keeping with a sustainable sick leave management program. And they're certainly far off what would be regular standards outside of, I think, of our existing not experience, right? So it's, it's, it's a generous program. And I think to say, what can I give back? I think, I think that that's not fully measurable. So I appreciate that, that's not probably perfectly what you want to hear. I don't want to give you something that wouldn't be fair to say is accurate. I don't have a number to say, but I can tell you, I can't change what is currently happening without additional staff to address this. I can tell you that 10 years ago, average sick leave in this board looked like 10 days. 10 days. Today, it's just a sigh of 17.
Thank you, trustee O'Hearn Chanada. Thank you. Up next is trustee Saunders.
You have the floor. Thank you, through you, Chair. The last, when this came up the last time, I'd asked for some, you know, some description of what this job is, who they're doing, what the job description is. I mean, I even thought that attendance support was, you know, the kids, because there was so little information. So I have to be honest, I've just checked my emails. I still don't see any information outlining, you know, who these people are.
Trustee Saunders, your question, your question.
Okay, the job is, do you have this information that I asked for?
You are asking for a job description.
Job description.
So I, I think I responded last time quite clearly, and I'll answer the same. Job description is the job of our Director of Education. Okay? And he and staff work on that. We are trustees, we don't get into the role of hiring staff or whatever, disciplining staff. So again, we, we are governance, okay? So.
So I guess my question is, how do you expect me to vote on something? I have no idea what I'm voting on. So that's, that's my question.
So the, the motion is in front of you. That's what we are voting on. You're not voting on a job description, trustee Saunders. So you have any further questions on?
The quick one, why are we not prioritizing this money to, for other teaching positions? I mean, French teachers, I know we need, this money could, I think we have other priorities. Why are we not using this money for that?
Thank you. Director Klein.
Okay, I'll start at least by going back to the PPM that I noted at the start. So the PPM talks about the attendance support. There's no reference in it in terms of hiring more French teachers. That would be, and again, there would be no money for it anyway with regard to this. So that's, that's a start for it as well. The, it's entirely about that attendance support, and I think support is a key word in it. I think it is, again, an opportunity to meet people where they are and to try and do what it says in the PPM is, again, I think we all understand management rights to ensure that we're running as effectively and smoothly as possible. I'm not sure if I saw a light on over there or not, but I think.
Superintendent Kroll.
Sure. With regards to the response to the comment of French teachers, we have salary to pay for French teachers. That's not the issue. So when we have classrooms that are unfilled with French teachers, that has nothing to do with it. We have. So, when we have classrooms that are unfilled with French teachers, that has nothing to do with whether we have budget or salary to pay for those. So, I don't think that comment's appropriate.
Thank you. Trustee Saunders, any further questions? Okay. Up next is trustee Agnew. You have the floor.
Thank you. So, the, the question, so I understand all of the pieces with respect to this sick, the sick program, the sick day program, the, you know, what has been negotiated, why it's there, why it exists, and then obviously why we're seeing some of those challenges with respect to financials because of that piece. But I think what I come back to each time I think about this, and, and thank you for pointing out that we have seen an increase. But I think about regardless of the number of sick days that are allocated, is why are they being utilized? So, I hate to draw parallels to my own life, but it's the best example that I have. So, I get ten sick days at work. I don't take ten sick days. If I'm sick, I take them, but, because I need them. But I don't take them just because I have ten sick days. So, I think where I'm struggling a little bit here is what is the work being done alongside this request that is going to get to the root of why we're seeing that increase? I, I understand that it's there. It is what it is. But just because it's there doesn't mean that it needs to be utilized. Again, back to my prior example. So, I guess we're, I'm needing more information on is if the days are there, the days are there. But why are we seeing so much staff taking that number of days and then exceeding that number of days? What is being done to not have that happen? Like, is, are we seeing, is it burnout? Is it, are people getting sick because of other factors? Are there other pieces going on that need to be addressed? So, it's, you know, if you have a lot of crime that's going on, right, you, you don't always just hire more police. You take a look at why those crimes are happening and you put other elements in place to try to address those pieces. And then if you can't get it under control. So, I'm just trying, I, I see everyone looking. I'll be done with my thought in a second. So, I'm just trying to understand the piece that goes along with that. So, recognizing that this is, this is being put forward to try to bring all of that under control for those financial reasons that were discussed. But adding people and adding people and adding people and adding people isn't going to change the root of why people are taking those, those sick days, if that makes sense. And, because I don't want to think that everybody's lingering and they're taking them just because they're there. So, that's what I need more information on.
Superintendent Loft?
I'll just go quick, Mr. Chair, to trustee Agnew. If that, if it was unique to our board, it might be something. But this is a provincial issue across the province. This isn't a Hilton Catholic issue that we have. And the PPM was put in place by the province for all boards to, to follow suit, to do this. So, I'll just maybe start with that, just saying if it was a Hilton Catholic issue, then there's a little more that you could look at. But this isn't necessarily a Hilton Catholic issue and that there is a PPM that came from, from Queens Park relating to it. So, I'll just maybe stop there. Others, more knowledge can talk.
Thank you. Thirty, you have thirty-two seconds.
I do recognize that and I, and respectfully, I don't, I, I'm not a board, I'm not a trustee for those other boards. So, what I'm trying to understand is here, what are we doing here to try to assist the staff so that we're not seeing that problem with taking too many sick days? Like, what are we doing to support them so that they feel supported? So that they're not taking as many days as they may be taking?
Thank you. I'll direct this question to Director Klein.
I know Superintendent Oldman has her light on and is eager to respond, so go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I think we have data that, that is supportive of, of certainly seasonalities. And, and we understand would be like you said yourself, right? If you're, you're sick, you need to utilize them. We, we have seasonalities that's, that suggest different trends, but we also have utilization and frustrations perhaps in some instances from both parents and, 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 you know, administrators who are, you know, seeing patterns. And I, I don't want to focus that on this, but I think the challenge here realistically is when we look at a sick leave plan ten years ago, not that long ago, that was about an accumulated sick leave credit or a sick leave bank, the average utilization was nearly half of what we're seeing today. So, the program today and its design is, is, I'm, I'm saying this strongly, is flawed, remarkably flawed. So, I, and I, and I, I know that that's not what your point was. I appreciate that. I think the challenge is I can't understand the root cause. Some of it because of the restrictions of the language. I, I will say that there are significant challenges with it in our, in our experience when we do try to inquire about why in a supportive way and then in some ways a more inquisitive way. Those look a little different, I appreciate. The challenge is if we want to use, you know, crime or police or, you know, or smoke detectors or, or, you know, smoke alarms, right, or, or fire extinguishers. Right now, all we've got are extinguishers. We're responding and we, we can't even keep up based on the utilization. And so, I can't even understand root cause because staff are just responding based on the bleed that's occurring. And so, to understand that, I, I can't do that. So, I guess that's what I'm saying. The choice is yours in terms of what we expect. The cost has year over year increased. I suggest without any change, that will continue. That's your choice in front even from a budgetary perspective. Operationally, I can say if you, if you equipped me with staff to do more of the, this work that you're suggesting trustee Agnew and, and be, you know, less reactive and more proactive to the needs, I might know that better. The challenge right now is there are restrictive language that, and, and I get, I do get pushback when we inquire about, well, don't inquire. And, and I, and I think that that's a real challenge. And when I, you know, when I read the language in the PPM, and I, I don't want to just focus on the PPM because it's beyond that, these people do, they're doing the PPM work. They're doing the average day-to-day sick leave administration, which I've told, told you the data, I'm not going to reiterate it again. Like, they're doing ergonomic assessments. Like, these are the people doing all of it, right? It's one size fits all, do it all, be there and be there at a hundred and ten percent. These aren't the people often utilizing sick leave in these responsive ways. The PPM is what I'm trying to get at. And I think it's what we need to be mindful of when we want to look as a system for growth and continued growth and why students and parents are going to choose Hilton Catholic instead of Hilton District and Hamilton Catholic, whatever it is, be the, the board of choice. The PPM has stip, and this is, this is based on research, stability, there's a footnote to it. I can send it for anyone who would like that. Stability and continuity in the school and classroom are important. Educators who are consistently present and can better assess the learning needs of their students can plan their instructive, instruction responsively, which is a key component to student learning and achievement. When I read the MYSP, that's what I hear in it. I can't, I can't expect change and I don't think it would be reasonable for us to expect change from a fiscal perspective, a student achievement or student experience perspective without this as one of the very few tools within my disposal. I'm trying to be responsive in what the key purpose of the PPM is, and I think that's all of our ask. I think that's glaringly true in the MYSP that we've recently re-inspired. I, I guess I just leave you with that. I don't think it's reasonable for us to expect a change on these costs. I've been in this room several times on budget discussions where that has come up every year. I'm sure it will in a couple of months. It isn't going to also be instantaneous. I want to just be also transparent on that. To, to seek a change of this magnitude is going to take some time. So, I don't want to say, you know, here's your commitment and that's, I think, trustee Ohan Chanara, I think that's what you were getting at is what's that going to look like? What's that return? And, and that's a reasonable question. I don't have that data because I, 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 I'm, that, that's something work that I'd have to do. We, we, we aren't going to see any change in the current status though. And I think to reasonably expect that is just not something. So, I, I think if we do nothing and that is totally a choice here, we have to expect that that cost will continue to increase. The data is glaringly true on that. That's objective. That's empirical.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Up next is trustee Kennedy. Trustee Kennedy, you have three minutes for questions.
When did the PPM, I didn't see the PPM. I'm not sure it's in the package. When did that get posted?
Through you, Chair. June, June.
June twenty six.
June twenty twenty four.
So, I'm just wondering, why, why could we not have had this in our December revised estimates using the budget?
Superintendent Oldman?
Six months later.
Uh, direct, sorry.
Through you, Chair.
Go ahead.
With, with all due respect, I think we worked having discussions in June when this was launched and it was launched at the same time that we were approving a budget cycle. I appreciate your question was about revised. I, I think we were reasonably trying to balance ourselves in a, in a prudent way. I think we've done exceptional efforts to that end with many of my colleagues who are in this room. So, whether that came then, it comes today or it comes in June, I guess that, that option of, of the offer remains. So, whether, why it didn't come then, I think is our focus is on more appropriately other things.
Trustee Kennedy?
So, I heard about keeping teachers in front of students, you know, disruption. So, again, I'll go back to PD. One thing we do and we haven't looked at is pulling teachers out of class and that also was, can be also disrupted. But I'm just wondering, ten days versus seventeen, do we have any evidence like this will work? Any other boards that have done things like this and having an extra two people based on the size that it actually has worked? Or is it so new that there's nothing yet?
Superintendent Oldman?
Through you, Chair. I guess the inverse of that is we've had two the, the entire time that this program has seen that. So, also I'll say it in the inverse, I guess, is, is with, with the two that we have, who are doing all of these things that we've just discussed. I think we've seen the, the slope on an upward trajectory there. I don't, I don't know that I can tilt that slope at the rate that would probably be reasonably expected and by all of you. But yeah, I, I think it, it would, it's surely going to have some effect. I think we made significant efforts last year to share our experience. I know with Superintendent Kroll and Superintendent Loft and many of us who informed some of that, there were several presentations that went out to really outline our financial circumstance and situation at the board. And we tried to take, you know, train the trainer model and, and expect that our, our principals were doing the same with their staff. So, we were sharing. There, there's not really anything to, to not share in this whole process. I think that in accordance with our resuming of the attendance support program yielded a notable decrease in, in sick leave, which put us into a better position at revised. So, to say, will it have an effect? I think we've made small impacts in a short amount of time that had notable impact. So, I'd like to suggest that it would. Can I guarantee you today that it will? I can't because I don't control the whole, the whole model.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. No, this is question time. You have further questions?
Yeah, sure. So, I'm just wondering, like, I mean, people are sick for many reasons, right? They're sick. It could be, sick is the big one, I would imagine. It could be morale. There could be a lot of things, right? I'm just wondering, is there any, I think I agree with what trustee Agnew was saying. We don't really know, but is there a way to have maybe some sort of focus group or, you know, look at the board? Like, maybe people are just have some unhappiness with the board. I don't know, right? And is there, is there some appetite for something like that to see if we, we maybe bring the union together? You know, management trustees to look at something like that and have a conversation?
Superintendent Oldman?
Through you, Chair. I, I do think that those discussions are, are always open. I think there's requirements under the PPM to establish a needs assessment. Part of that exercise is what's in front of you tonight. It's not the only part of that needs assessment exercise. But part of it also under the PPM is required that we have an attendance support committee established. That requirement is expected. I think I had shared earlier, but I'll reiterate that that's required by June of twenty twenty six. That work needs to be underway with staff who can actually reasonably, in the proactive versus reactive note that I'd made earlier, can be in a space where they actually have the ability to, to, to respond in those ways. So, there are requirements to do exactly what I think you're suggesting, trustee Kennedy. It's our, it's our goal. It's our obligation and it will be our deliverable that we, we meet those requirements under the PPM. Lots of boards have done lots of different things, sorry to, to more fulsomely, I guess, answer your last question. You know, I, I think that this was shared not that long ago in terms of some boards that have taken perhaps, you know, different approaches and in the spirit of hiring additional external staff to be, you know, providing additional audit and review of, of staff who are perhaps accessing sick leave and that's yielded some results for those bigger boards, perhaps west or, sorry, east of us. So, so I think lots of boards are doing lots of things. And to your point on, is it, is it relatively too new? From my experience and understanding with other boards, based on our size and our utilization, we're, we're quite small and lean in our attendance support office to reasonably responsive to the, to the, to the volume that we're experiencing.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy, and next question.
Yeah, I just have a question. So, this is obviously again, another in-year request for, for reserve. So, if this is not approved today, I just wonder maybe through Chair, Director Klein or Superintendent Loft, will this be put into the June budget anyway?
So, trustee Kennedy, if it's not approved and the amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars has to go into the next motion and edit something, we need to account for. The main motion says that X amount is being discussed. So, if it's not approved, then this two hundred fifty thousand dollars has to go somewhere, some, the next motion probably. We have three parts, right?
No, but, no, but this, no, but this is, this is reserve money.
We have to satisfy the motion, main motion.
No, it's, my, my question is if this, if this is not voted in favor today, will these two extra support, attendance support professionals be automatically rolled into the large budget where we don't really see line items and just be added anyway? Because if trustees vote against it, they clearly are.
Let me pass this on to Superintendent Loft and then Superintendent Oldman.
Well, let's go first and maybe we'd get through this process first, trustee Kennedy, before we worry about the next process.
I just like to have a commitment that if trustees vote this down, that it won't automatically be put in.
No, we, we can't, we can't do that. This motion is on the table. The trustees need to vote on this item.
So.
That, we can't speculate further thing.
Oh, I know. So, it can be done anyway, even if we vote it down in June.
So, vote it down or whatever you decide to do. It's the trustees' right to vote, right?
Right. But what I'm saying is it doesn't, it doesn't mean it won't be put in in June.
It means simply that the money is not available to HR to
Right.
do whatever they have to do with, they would have done with this money.
Okay, so, okay, other question. So, if we use two hundred fifty thousand and we're, we're, we're budgeting till August, right? If, if this was approved and now we're in March, assume you hire someone, let's say in April, right? You've got April to August. You need two hundred fifty thousand from April to August or is it prorated from April to August? The reserves you would need because it's, we're kind of two thirds of way through here here.
Okay, I'll pass this on to Superintendent Tooldman or Superintendent Loft?
It would be less than two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Trustee Kennedy? You have one minute. Okay, thanks. Thanks. Up next, we are in question period. Up next is trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So, I would like to clarify this particular motion. Is that per, per year? Is this a one, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from unallocated funds? And then next year, are we keeping these employees and will it come out of unallocated funds again?
Superintendent Loft?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Carabella. That's a good question and it's, unlike the other two items, this would be something that would be going forward on. So, it would necessarily be a one and done, which the other two items were. Like, we had them as the six fourteen and the one hundred. Or typically for a specific project, this is something that would go on beyond this current year. And would it be two hundred fifty thousand? Trustee Kennedy is correct. It wouldn't be two hundred fifty thousand for this current year, but it would go forward next year.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Next question.
Follow-up is the next year, does it still come out of unallocated funds?
Superintendent Loft?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I would hope it would not. I hope it would be part of the, of the ongoing budget going forward. So.
So, that helps me understand that, like, if, if we can get funds from other places than unallocated funds for these positions. So, going forward, again, if it's not voted here, taking money out of the unallocated reserves, which I reticent to do, if it's needed, then we can find another place where they could be funded. These positions could be funded.
Superintendent Loft?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That's a difficult question considering I don't know what the funding model is for next year. So, it might not be. It's, it's kind of something that we need to look at when we get there going forward. So, if, if you're just thinking arbitrarily that we will just have another, if we don't do it now, we'll do it then. Not necessarily. We'll, we'd have to, to wait and see. We'd still bring it back as part of the budget process, so.
Thank you, trustee Carabella.
Okay, so I did read PPM seven, one seven one, one seven one. And it spoke about establishing the attendance support committee. So, I'm wondering, when is that step happening? How far are we along on that as a way to support our teachers? Thank you.
Superintendent Oldman?
Through you, Chair. I, I kind of, I think I had noted indirectly when I spoke to trustee Kennedy's questions. But as part of our needs assessment, which informs the attendance support committee and the work that will be done there, this would be a precursor to that requirement. It, it will be required that we set one up. It would be likely that that would occur within the next school year.
Thank you, trustee Carabella.
And is there a reason why it couldn't be the first thing to, to help establish and get feedback already? Other ideas first?
Through you, Chair.
Go ahead, Superintendent Oldman.
I think it would be important to onboard staff with our own systems and, and way of doing and our collective agreements and the requirements within that to meaningfully expect that then they drive an attendance support committee. I, I think it's, you know, the cart and the horse, so to speak. So, I, I think that that would be my professional opinion and recommendation.
Director Klein, would you like to add something? No, good. Trustee Carabella, your next question.
It had to do with targeting as well. Like, what was, what would be your? Had to do with targeting as well, like what was what would be your measure of success? What what metric are we going to use?
Minimally, I'd like through you Chair, my apologies. Minimally, I'd like to at least be able to say to you, yeah, this isn't coming from the unallocated reserves because your investment is going to come pay dividends right back to us as a board and it'll pay for itself. So that that would be my immediate goal. And that by immediate, I mean a shorter term. Perhaps some media might be overly ambitious, but that would be a short term goal that I think would be reasonable for us. And I think that that's not terribly far reaching, given what I was indicating that Superintendent Kroll and Superintendent Loffs, with the assistance of many other superintendents in this room and some of the the quick efforts that we put into the work that we had done last school year and then the, I think, benefits that it had in terms of reductions on sick leave. So I don't think that's an unrealistic goal to at least be addressing your first question there, which is about, you know, the ongoing use of unallocated reserves to support these these positions. I I think it's not unreasonable to think or suggest that my goal would be that these roles themselves are already taking care of themselves.
Thank you, trustee Caribella.
I'm, oh, well, just regarding trustee Sandra's questions about the job description. So there must, when you did your needs assessment, you must have had an idea, you know, of a particular task and you you needed two people. Why would you would one suffice?
Superintendent Oldman?
Thank you.
Or?
Through you Chair. The needs assessment is ongoing. I think the needs assessment is going to not just be a one and done, not unlike the discussion here in terms of it's an ongoing reality. And as this utilization shifts with our responsiveness, so too with our needs assessment and being continuously responsive and adaptive. As I said, right now, we're currently in firefighting mode. We're in fire extinguisher mode. We're responding, trying our best to respond to the to the utilization. So I think we want to shift that to a support function, which is what trustee Agnew was suggestive of. I think that that's where I want to move us to, right? It is being in a in a more proactively thoughtful way. So I I don't think that that is possible, in my my opinion, in the current model. I think we've been flat in this complement for as long as we have, which I shared earlier. And I don't mean to be pedantic and reiterate. So yeah, it's our it's our recommendation that based on what's required here and based on what's not or hasn't yet been changed through the centrally bargain program is I think that that's a reasonable ask here. It's about, I think it's investing a little to get a return on a lot is what I see it here.
Thank you, trustee Caribella.
Just again, to to if it if we didn't go from unallocated funds, it comes from our board board budget, right? To pay for staff. Okay, thank you.
Up next, trustee Powell. You're the floor. You have three minutes for question time.
Thank you through your chair. I don't know who you want to direct it to, but I have a couple of questions just regarding the other boards that trustee Kennedy was talking about. You mentioned that there were two other boards that have currently implemented this, Glockrift. It wasn't clear on what you meant.
Superintendent Oldman?
Through you Chair. No, so all boards are required to be in compliance with PPM 171s. PPM even reflects the fact that many boards like us actually are well ahead in terms of having an established program. How effective is the program? You know, how much, you know, does it yield in terms of, I think, what we're seeking out here? So I think different boards are on different trajectories. Certainly, the experience which we were saying about the increase in costs and the increase of utilization has is is a provincial problem. Catholic, public, French, English. There's no question there. I think the boards that I was referencing earlier, which were referenced, I think, recently in some media articles were about some boards have taken the position of of investing dollars, maybe not unlike dollars such as this, probably a lot more dollars than this to hire, you know, private investigators or the such to address similar concerns. But but I think ours is a little bit more fulsome. We're looking at support and the the sick leave administration ongoingly because these rules are some some boards hire staff who just look at attendance support. Some people hire staff who just look at disability management or abilities management or wellness, right? So so we kind of have a catch all. We do everyone. These these individuals do all of it. So I think ours looks a little different for that purpose. But the boards that I was referencing were were, you know, boards to the east of us, the probably the largest in this province. So without naming names. So and some of the work that was and that was highlighted. I'm not disclosing anything that wasn't shared in in media articles to that effect.
Thank you, trustee Powell.
So then my question to you, like, I mean, the collective agreement, like the wording, we can't, we can't change, right? Our hands are tied. That's in there and that's the right employees to have those. So I guess it goes back to how do we, how do we address it on a bigger scale? Obviously, the province, the ministry is saying this is a big issue province wide. I guess the kind of redundant question is that. How are they supporting? This is their only way to support the issue?
Lieutenant Loffs?
Through Mr. Chair to trustee Powell. Yes, that is right now what their response is for.
Then my follow up to that through your chair is if this is highlighted as a huge crisis, let's say, why aren't they funding it? Again, that's probably a redundant question.
Superintendent Loffs?
It's a legitimate question. If it's one, they think that this funding would come out of any potential decrease or the 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 time or or whatnot, but there definitely is no funding. That was our question right away. You're making us implement something, but you're not telling us how to fund it. So we felt the same way and we did present those questions.
May I, Chair?
Good, Superintendent Oldman?
Through you. To Superintendent Loffs, note, when when this was asked, not just of halt and Catholic, but the council of senior human resource officials and certainly the council of senior business officials that kind of are the overarching communities that we're part of, Superintendent Loffs and I. Often the response from the ministry, and it's not an unreasonable one, is will attendance support and and leave management is within your management rights? And we would expect that you respond in, you know, in kind with hiring staff who can address. So, you know, it's it's a little bit of a cyclical dance, so to speak. So in the absence of doing that is, yeah, I think we've we've addressed that one tonight, so.
Thank you, trustee Powell.
I guess, so I think if there if there's something we can do as the ministry, is there something that we can do to push it? If there and if it's been, if they're raising this issue back or they implemented it in June, as I forgot it, June 2024, why, if it's mandated, why prompt it here? What's what's been the dilemma?
Superintendent Loffs?
Through Mr. Chair, I'll maybe August 3rd. So we have, as far as the letter of the law, we do have a lot of this in place. So as trustee or Superintendent Oldman mentioned, some of it doesn't have to be in place of 2026. So we still have a little bit of time. And that's part of it why we're we're towards now. You got to think too that this is fairly new across the province, like it's something that, at least from the ministry's perspective, they haven't well, they just put it through the June, the end of June, I think it was June 26 or June 27 of 2024 is when it came out, right after the initial budgets, right after everyone's going off on summer leave. Our departments were already busy going through bill 124 and all the other adjustments we had to do. So staff has been inundated since this time, and this is just another layer that that we're looking at. I think we're kind of getting to that position right now. And that's why we're coming back here to kind of address some of the needs. Maybe I'll just. Oldman, have any more to add to that?
Through you Chair. In July of 2024, when this was first launched, HR, after we got through our first round, I say first round of staffing for the 2425 school year, we conducted a gap analysis on our current attendance support program as it relates to the requirements in the PPM. That work was done immediately. In terms of the bridge, like I'd said earlier, we're in relatively good shape in terms of the the compliance outside of the committee, which trustee Caribella you had acquired about and and that needs assessment, which I think I've referenced. We're in relatively good shape. Is there refinement? There is. It's not. It's not the same for some other boards who don't even have an attendance support program. And and there are components and legalities that that inform that. That hasn't been our experience. We've been successful in, you know, maintaining our management rights to establish one. We have mediated settlements to that effect from arbitrators who have supported our establishment. So so we're in relatively better shape and that's what our gap analysis confirmed to us. And that's what our ongoing needs assessment does. And I say that in relation to compliance to the PPM, non relation to the costs that we've spoken about earlier in the utilization.
Trustee Powell, still have still have a minute.
Do I have a couple?
Yep, sure.
Okay, I just have one final. Thank you for that. Um, I just, you mentioned that, I believe it was like 10 years ago, you said 10 days was the average sick day. We're currently at about 17 days. But I mean, we also went through two and a half years of COVID. Like, is that? I, is that unreasonable? That we've jumped that high, considering, you know, the increased stress and development behavioral?
Through you Chair.
Superintendent Oldman?
The years immediately prior to COVID, our our utilization during COVID was not far off the years immediately prior to COVID. The increase we've seen has been in a steady, you know, three plus days on average year over year since those years. The 1920 year, which was impacted on the ministerial order on March 13th of 2020, when COVID-19 pandemic was declared by the premier. We that year, appreciating the latter end of that year after March break, looked obviously remarkably different, which I don't need to bring us all back to that time for good reason. We were at nine. It was only, right? We only we only worked until March 12th, March 13th that year, when the minister order was was in play. We also had a lot of strike action in that year. Again, I'm not trying to everyone relive the 1920 school year for good reason. I think no one here wants to. We were at nine. That was only a partial year, right? We were September to March and we were at nine. That was pre-COVID. If I can put that into context, it might be helpful. It might not be, but I'll share it.
Thank you, trustee Powell. You still have time? Two seconds. Okay, thank you. Up next is trustee Kelly. Trustee Kelly, you have three minutes, question time.
Thank you through you Chair. So just basically with this discussion, I can understand why this was brought forward, but it's important just to consider how this requirement impacts both operational needs and team morale. And I understand that it's hard to determine a root cause like sickness, mental health leaves and morale. And with this in mind, does the current like attendance program support feel like feel supportive to staff based on the staff that you've interviewed? As I understand, there have been like support meetings that have been conducted with staff. So to summarize, could there be a risk that this might need to maybe more pressure to staff to go back to work rather than addressing the supportive needs that staff like are reasonably why they are taking more and more sick days?
Superintendent Oldman?
Yeah, so I think I think the nature of the the collective agreement, which really governs sick leave administration, is separate and apart from the attendance support program. Because the attendance support program, which PPM calls out and our policy program already defines is that of incidental absenteeism. So there's the difference between culpable and non-culpable. Those are two different pathways. And 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 so that's naturally work that happens in the world of of abilities and wellness management. And and so the 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 role of the attendance support program isn't to pressurize individuals to come back at an early rate. I think it's about support. It's about understanding. And I think that's what trustee Agnew, if I can infer what I think you were intending to, is to uncover the root cause, to understand the why. I will say the challenge we have is some of the language that we are are, it's outside of our hands that is bargained for us at at the first tier, which is the provincial tier of bargaining, which says, you know, here is a functional abilities form. And in in very simple forms, often it'll say, just can't work, right? And and so we don't get to actually inquire. That's very different than many other programs outside of that, many of which you may experience in your own professions outside of this. So to to the point is not to be pressurized when we're talking about attendance support. When we talk about sick leave administration, we're doing that within the confines of the collective agreement. And that is to address the difference between what's culpable and non-culpable. And so we're looking at the culpable on that side, right? And not always. There's lots of good reason why people need to access sick leave and there's no question in that. There's no dispute. That doesn't mean that there's not a lot of administrative work that goes into managing that exercise. And I will tell you, even just the exercise of one individual and the constant follow up to say, hey, we need your leave. We need your, you know, update, like that in and of itself administratively is a task. It's a notable task. And then we're, you know, reimbursing for every medical note. And so and I'm not trying to belabor it, but but I think the practical and administrative function on the the everyday leave management, which is the collective agreement language, and then there's the attendance support program, which is about non-culpable absenteeism. And that's what's distinguished here. So I think we have to just know that there's two very different pathways. And that program, the non-culpable management and support program, is really to understand. And that there's been several who have actually come out of the program as a result. And I think our program even calls out that we appreciate the number that comes up. And you may pass the threshold, the threshold for entry into our attendance support program as it currently is designed, which is subject to ongoing review and perhaps recommendation, is that 16.67? That just say of 17 like that. If you're under that, we're not even looking at you. 10 years ago, that number was 10. There were less than 50 people enrolled in 2013 and 2014 in that attendance support program. There's well over 300 today. Same amount of staff.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly, your next question.
Yep. So thank you for that response. So I guess something I had in mind was in regards to the mention that we are like like we have a program and we're ahead in that program and that's specific PPN and we're in compliance and relatively good shape. But I'm also hearing that we need two extra hirees, staff members for this. So if we're under compliance, I'm also just confused, and this may be a bit repetitive. Why do we need two more? Again, this might be repetitive, but just to clarify that.
Thank you, trustee Kelly. I think Superintendent Oldman answered a bit, but again, for good his benefit, could you please go that? Go through that again.
Through you Chair. Trustee Kelly, the role, the challenges that we call these individuals in tended support, you know, professionals, and then we're talking about attendance support programs. So it gets a little muddy, I guess, in that. That's not the only work that they do. So this is not just strictly for PPM 171 compliance and and responsiveness to that. It's beyond just that. It is about, which is why I was also trying to share the the sick leave utilization data and the associated costs with that. So it's a multi faceted position. Some boards treat it differently. Ours is a is a catch all job.
Thank you, trustee Kelly. Question?
I'll yield for the chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other hands up for question time, close question time and open up debate time. Trustees, at this point in time, trustees want to make an amendment. We can make an amendment or we can if you can debate or we can take it to vote. So I'll open up debate time. Trustees want to debate about this. Trustee Kennedy? Three minutes.
Thank you. So, you know, I I do agree with some of the points made by other trustees also, you know, trustee Saunders that, you know, we we don't get, you're right, trustee Chair, sorry, we don't get involved in the day to day. But when we're asked to spend, you know, this kind of money, it'd be nice to know what exactly it's being used for. I do think sick leave went down last year a little bit. I think that has improved, which is which is a good thing. And, you know, there could be many reasons. It could be morale. I mean, class sizes were exceeded. We don't know if teachers are being overworked, but we do know that class sizes were have were exceeded last year beyond ministry standards. So, you know, I I propose a different approach, you know, absenteeism is high. I would like to see maybe a meeting with management trustees in the union, if other trustees would want something like this. If we can find ways to work together, hoping our director, if if trustees want to do something like that, can help facilitate something like that. That'd be appreciated. And also, just to reiterate back, I I also hope that if if trustees don't support this motion, you know, they're 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 sending, you know, to to hire two more attendance support professionals, that our our budget team, our director would would acknowledge that and not and not include it in the upcoming June budget of trustees vote today and not to have these these two positions. Thank you.
Trustee Kennedy? Anybody else? Trustee Hohon Chanata?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So a couple of things. I think we're poking the wrong bear. We have to remember, and trustee Powell brought it up, this PPM was implemented and say, okay, everyone, go execute it. But guess what? You're getting no money. So any of my ministry friends listening, that's on you. That's not on us. So from what I'm hearing, I'm hearing that a department needs some extra hours into their capacity to help keep us in compliance, because our job as trustees is to make sure that the board is in compliance for PPMs. That that's what I'm hearing. So if we do nothing. That, that's what I'm hearing. So, um, if we do nothing, we're going to expect the same result, right? That's the definition of insanity. So as much as I'd like to give the two people, I'm feeling around the table that there's some reservations for many different reasons. So I would like to oppose to propose an amendment to this and approve the allocation of $125,000, which would be one more head, because we have given different staff and added more staff to different departments throughout the years because of PPMs that have come down and we've added more staff to them. So I'm willing to see if there's a flavor for that, because to be quite honest, I'd rather add one than add none, if it goes that way.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada. You're proposing an amendment. Uh, can we take that motion and strike out and fix that? May I have a, I need a move, uh, you're, you're moving that item, so I need a second.
I'll move it, yeah.
Looking for a second. Thank you. So trustee Ohan Chanada, is this, does it look okay?
That's the spirit of the amendment I wish to bring forth. Yeah.
The, uh, so the motion amendment is moved by trustee Ohan Chanada, seconded by trustee Agnew. Trustee Ohan Chanada, you have three, uh, you have five minutes to open up a discussion, but
Okay, I don't think.
Give me a second, let me just reset my timers here. And, uh, you have five minutes, okay? Go ahead.
Um, so I proposed the amendment. I'm just getting a feeling that maybe, you know, the $250,000 is a little rich. Maybe this is a good place to start. And if we feel that we're making some gains and we're getting some, maybe we add the second staff member whenever you deem is necessary. It's Director Klein's board, it's Superintendent Oldman's department. So uh, to try to care to hear a voice that, hey, we need some extra resources. I get it in my day job. There's things that we can do that aren't necessarily hard, but you just need the hours to do it and the people to do it. So sometimes you have to pay upfront to get some gains in, in, in return. Um, it's unfortunate we're at this position, um, for many different reasons where we're at. I don't think anyone around this table is, this is not a blame game. This is not here to add staff to blame anybody. It's actually to figure out what is going on out there and so that we can, we can change it. So really in summary, I want to propose some sort of a middle of the road so that we get some extra staff into the department. So Superintendent Oldman and Director Klein can run the board as, as they see fit and maybe help us, um, get some resolve from this issue.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada. We'll now open up question time on the amendment to the motion that you see on the screen. Uh, up next is, uh, trustee Agnew.
Thank you. Um, so, and I'm, I'm sorry to, to, I, I don't mean to ask you to repeat, but I'm wondering if I could just, if you could just reiterate once more, if you don't mind, Superintendent Oldman. Um, the piece around the intention behind this as far as not policing people to go back to work, but the, you know, what you, the comments that you had made with respect to culpable and non-culpable and could you just speak to that a little bit again, if you don't mind?
Superintendent Oldman?
Through you, Chair. The attendance support program is not designed to be disciplinary in nature. It is to be supportive in nature to address the not incidental use of the sick leave program and either whether that be in patterning or otherwise, it is supposed to be supportive. It's supposed to be unpacking, perhaps what you were suggesting earlier is the why. What's keeping you away from work? What's keeping you from being able to consistently and reliably come to work, which is really the predication of the employment agreement. You come to work reliably, I pay you reliably. That's, that's the, that's the basic concept. So that's the attendance support program. These attendance support professionals are also tasked with the role of the culpable absenteeism. They're, they're stuck in the middle of having to deal with both. And I'll say there is a large majority in that facet. This person, these people do both of those jobs. They're wearing both hats at all times. That's a, that's a tough job to do, but they're certified and tasked and professionals in this work. Does that help clarify?
Trustee Agnew?
Yeah, I mean, I have more questions, but it feels like it's getting a little bit tense, so that will satisfy for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any further questions, uh, on other topics? You have two minutes. Thank you. Trustee Agnew? Okay, thank you. Okay, up next we have trustee Sanders, question time.
Yeah, it, my, my concern is that, um, you know, 250, 125,000, this seems, should have been like the end. Like I, I would expected that, you know, having consulted with teachers, having consulted with unions, having consulted with trustees.
Sanders will keep so question time.
Well, the, the question is this, do you not think that 125,000 is just throwing a little less gasoline on a fire? Rather than the, the 250? I, I don't, I don't see this as, as an improvement.
I mean, uh, trustees have proposed this amendment. It's not for me to, uh, to, to, uh, to discuss and to, to debate on, on the motives behind that. So you have options. You vote on it or you, for or against. So I, I would never want to question the motives of trustees, and that's not our role. So. Okay, you have any further questions, trustee? Thank you. Up next is trustee Kennedy. You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Three minutes of questions.
Yeah, I did see the PPM. It doesn't say that we actually have to hire anybody, but what I'm hearing is we don't have enough people to do the work. Sometimes that happens. We all, you know, a lot of us have that at work, right? Where you just have more work put on you, you don't have extra people to help. So I just, and again, using reserves, um, that is money we don't have. That's our savings account. That's for emergencies. Um, and by doing all these changes today, including this one, really allows us to go at the end of the year and say, we have a balanced budget. By doing these things today, we do not have a balanced budget. And we have an audit coming up and I don't know why these things, if we knew about it in June last year, six months is a long time for December to, to have brought these things to the, to the revised estimates. So I, I just think that would have been a better way to have, to, to ask those questions of trustees.
Uh, trustee Kennedy, I heard you saying this is not a balanced budget, but the balanced budget has been presented, uh, passed to superintendent and
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Kennedy, it's the second time I've heard you say this very similar comment. Um, as you know, when we did our financial statements, we did have a surplus. Correct? We had a surplus then. So at that point in time, the only way to allocate some of that surplus is to do what we're doing right now and bringing it back hopefully for one and done type projects, which is what we're bringing forward today. First one being the security. One, we, we already mentioned here that this one is not a one and done, but the next one is a one and done project. So I, I think that's got to be put into a little bit more context in that when we did the budget before and revised, we were just coming out of a period of time where we didn't have an opportunity to review where the needs are of the system. We just found out in November that we had a surplus, significant surplus, at least an unallocated surplus. We had to bring back the revised estimates in December. It didn't give us the opportunity to, as a senior team, to get together to see where are the needs of the system? What do we need to do at this point in time? This is why we thought the better way to do it was what we're doing now. We had a little extra last year. In order to utilize some of that, this is the way you do it. It's a one and done. As you know, we've presented the trustees for approval. Um, I don't really appreciate sometimes a comment that should have been brought here, should have been brought there. Um, we're bringing it now to trustees and you, like, uh, the chair has said, there is an option that you have to do, vote for it or vote against it. But this is the needs that we as a senior administrative team have put together for trustees to consider. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Kennedy, you have next question?
Yeah, my understanding was the surplus we had from November was for last year. We had an accounting correction of 7 million. We also had class sizes over where we hired less teachers and we had less EAs. So, you know, I never see these things come up to say, let's have 125 and hire two EAs. We cut those, but we're doing it for this particular purpose. It's always seems to be board level stuff and not at the school level. So if you're upset about it, I'm sorry, but I'm just not going to support this motion.
I think I need to clarify some of those points, Mr. Chair. Hold on. Trustee Kennedy, we are at this point in time, we were discussing this motion in front of us. It is against the Education Act. And it is against our trustee code of conduct. And we are throwing accusations against staff. We cannot be doing that. We should never be. So when we are, we are questioning the credibility of staff doing their work, it, it has come out that way. So that's the reason why I'm sensing temperatures around this room rising. So let's refrain from passing those comments. Let's stick to the facts. Superintendent Loft is here to present, uh, your information that you need, and I think we should look at it very positively. Director Klein?
I just want to clarify one other thing too, and I ask Superintendent Jack Calder if, but my understanding is, uh, we haven't reduced any EAs, is that true?
Superintendent Jack Calder?
Well, the comment was we, so I guess the implication was that we've reduced EAs.
Through you, Chair.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, we have not reduced it. In fact, we continue to have a very large allocation of EAs portioned to the province.
Thank you for clarifying. So trustee Kennedy, let's stay focused on, on this. Okay, let's not go back on, 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 on data which we do not really have. We have information provided in the last budget, which has balance. Let's stick to the facts.
Just further clarity in terms of, I believe we're, we're compliant in terms of class sizes as well, because that comment's been made twice now.
I think we've got to be going by the data that we have, trustee Kennedy.
Let's stick to the facts. So Director Klein, we were not complying. We were 23.19 for last year. So that's a fact. It's on the, it's on our website. We were not with class sizes. So anyway.
Let's not.
I didn't mean to say EAs, I meant to say lunchroom supervising and commissioners. Sorry, that's what we cut, sorry. Yeah, so, so the facts are this, but by doing these things and taking it from the reserves, as opposed to putting it in the general revenues that we use, that makes it less possible that we would have an unbalanced budget at the end of the month. That's a fact, right? So by using this money in advance, we're protecting ourselves from having an unbalanced budget. Right? Because we're taking it earlier, whereas all these items can actually be done without trustee approval. So I wonder why it's even coming to the trustees when all these things can be done through Director Klein, he has authority to hire anyone. Um, but I think it's, so, but, so why are we being asked to use reserves? And all I can see is we're being asked to use reserves, so that would definitely help with the budget at the end of the year. I, I just don't know why we're even devoting on these things.
Let's go to Superintendent Loft.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, and again through you. The surplus we had was not the, all the result of an accounting adjustment. Well, I know, and we're not talking about that right now. We're talking about a $5 million surplus that we had last year. And if you remember the year before, we had a $5 million deficit, which was uh, quite the bone of contention, if I remember correctly, having that at that point in time. So this $5 million, there was needs in the system. We saw it, we had the increase, we used it, it was unallocated. As you know, because you're on audit committee as well, we had that, it's in November, we had that vote. We bring it back to, it only gives us a month, trustee Kennedy, in order to utilize some of that savings and to decide where we're going to do it. We couldn't have done it. You're correct. It would theoretically put us into a deficit right now, a deficit that we can't afford. And I said can't, not can't. So I'm not putting the board at any risk at all. There's not a risk to this. This is a need in the system that we have and we have the funding to do it. The only way to be able to use some of these unallocated reserves, because we're already at our 2%, 2%, we're already there. We have all our money set aside for any extent or, um, any, any benefits that are still outstanding, um, employee future benefits, they're all put aside. We have money set aside for, um, our, on our, our capital side of the, of the house. So this money here was unallocated at year end. We just didn't have the opportunity to bring anything forward at the estimates or revised estimates, because we didn't have the opportunity to talk as a senior team to discuss where to utilize those funds. We talked as a senior team, and this is what we're bringing forward today to trustees. And again, I'll say it again. If trustees do not want to have this, that is your prerogative. We have brought it forward to you. But I don't need to necessarily have some of the comments that are being said right now. And again, and staff watches this too. And staff that have been working extremely hard to put this together. So I just want to make sure I, I mentioned that as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. Once again, trustees, they're having conversation, discussion. Let's keep that, uh, the, 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 the temper, uh, temperature down, sorry. Trustee Kennedy, you have still a minute? Questions?
I think our other staff watched this too, like teachers and from the feedback I'm getting, I don't, I don't think it's necessarily seen as appreciated. So again, I just can't support the motion.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Again, if, uh, I've mentioned this before, if staff has got questions, there is a channel for them to get those questions sent. Comments, again. There's a channel for them to get them addressed and as, as trustees, we've got to tell, uh, give them guidance and say, go through this particular channel. So thank you, trustee, uh, Kennedy, and thank you trustees. So we have the motion in front of us, uh, the amendment in front of us, moved by trustee Ohan Chanada, seconded by trustee Agnew. We finished question time. Uh, does anybody want to debate on this, uh, item? Seeing none, I shall take it to a recorded vote. So you're voting on the amendment to the main motion. Uh, trustee trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Sanders, opposed. Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Philbert?
Abstain.
Trustee McGuire, sorry, trustee Yabo?
Abstain as well.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Powell? Kennedy?
Opposed.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
I'm in.
Favor? Six opposed.
Um, sorry, point, point, point of order. I wasn't asked, trustee Vice Chair Murphy.
Yeah, how do you vote?
Opposed.
Okay, sorry about that. We have one in favor. We have seven opposed. The amendment fails. Now we've got to go back to the main motion. Once again, back to the main motion. And take a word on that item. And we have the motion. The second part of the main motion. Got a word on that. So this is the main motion that was moved by trustee Ohan Chanada and seconded by trustee Powell, the second part. So we have had question time on this. We have, uh, we were in, in debate time during, for this motion. Any trustees want to debate on this item? Seeing none, I shall take it to a recorded vote. Result, uh, so this one was moved by trustee Ohan Chanada, seconded by trustee Powell. Trustee Sanders, how do you vote on this item?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Philbert?
Abstain.
Trustee Yabo?
Abstain as well.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Powell? Trustee Kennedy?
Opposed.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Vice Chair Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Opposed.
So we have one in favor. Seven opposed, two abstentions. Motion fails.
Sorry, point of order, Mr. Chair. Could I just get clarification on when the chair votes and when the chair doesn't vote?
The chair could vote. The chair generally would vote for the tie, but it's a prerogative of the chair to vote.
So you can vote whatever you want. Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. So trustees, this motion has failed, so the amount of $100, uh, $250,000 and, uh, in the main motion needs to go somewhere. So the ma- the main motion, so it stays unallocated?
If you want, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, yeah, it's, it's, you've separated them out as three individual motions, so this one, yeah, so now it's dropped by two.
Thank you, thank you. So we shall now move on to the third part. Okay, the, the third part of the main motion moved by trustee Ohan Chanada, seconded by trustee Powell. Result of the Holland Catholic District School Board approved the allocation of $614,000 from un- unallocated reserves to support technology. I shall now open up, uh, uh, question time. Trustees, please raise your hand if you have questions. Seeing trustee Ohan Chanada?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Klein, Superintendent Loft, just a question. The way I was reading with the Baca material, and I, and I like it. It's kind of a 50/50 split, right? The board's going to put some money in and then the schools are going to put some money in, so we can get all the technology that we think we need for our students and our staff, right? That's the summary?
Yeah, through you, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Ohan Chanada. There's, yeah, there's two major parts that have come up this year. There's the end of life cycle on some of our iPads, where we have to eliminate them from the system. They can't be updated anymore. The other one that we have to start planning for is Windows 11, uh, update. So a lot of our systems right now are still on Windows 10. And then we have to update to Windows 11. In order to update to Windows 11, some of our, um, some of our computers are too old to handle that update. So we'd have to replace those computers, and that's where the other part of this is. So it's kind of a two-prong. We have that extension from, which is good news, from Microsoft, that we're able to extend it out a few more years with our Windows 10 product. But we got to start planning for it now. So that's what this is, is kind of the, the one and done kind of idea, kind of having both the board as well as the schools put money in towards replenishing their kind of having both the board as well as the schools put money in towards replenishing their assets.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada.
No, thank you very much. I know you can buy an iPhone and you walk out of the store and it's obsolete. So we have to continue to upgrade. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Sanders. Question time, three minutes, you have the floor.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. So I don't understand the, the way we're financing this. So 640 from the reserves, 614, sorry, from what, central funds? And the schools will be paying. I, I don't understand why, why are we, again, why are we going into reserves? I mean, it sounds like we're, we're paying for some of this out of our regular budget. So why, why are we going to reserves?
Superintendent Loft, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Sanders. Because the number that we're doing this year, the end of life, so Apple came up with the end of life, so you can't update anymore our, our iPads. You can't go to the newest system. And by that, a lot of those are security updates, so it leaves our network vulnerable. So this was kind of a, it's a big impact to some of our, especially our elementary schools that have iPads. Like, it's difficult for them to replace them all, all at once, like what's happening. So we're also started, started this process. A lot of times too, there was a, there's a lot of iPads out there that were at the school level, not necessarily at the central level. So going forward, we're also going to be monitoring the level of these iPads as to when their, when their useful life will be starting to run out. So we buy one this year, and whatever the iPads are now, 10. And they only last, I don't know, five, six years of updates. Then they're going to come due for another one. So we've got to be more looking at it from a more perspective of replacement. Every year, we need to start getting in the habit, our schools, of replacing these iPads, because I think we've been in the process to think they go on forever. And now with security, it's really now important for us to replace these and, and keep on it. If you go back even 10 years ago, it wasn't as big an issue, right? They keep running, it's hard for our schools to understand that, hey, the iPad still works. The kids are still being able to utilize them. The students are still being able to utilize them. Why are you essentially taking them out of my classroom? And it's not so much that they're not functioning, it's they're not updating them, and it leaves a vulnerability in our network. So similarly with our Windows on the, on the computer side, Windows 11 needs more resources than a Windows 10 computer does. And that's why some of our older Windows 10 computers can't handle the update. That one, we're a little bit fortunate in that Microsoft's extended it a couple of years. So the proverbial need isn't as great right now, but it's still something we need to get in the process of starting to do it, because it is going to be a pretty significant impact to the system, having to replace all these electronic devices. Trustee Sanders?
Yeah, sorry. Again, I, we have their central reserves. Last time I looked, there was substantial amount of money in there. I, I don't understand why we just don't use that. I, I'm not sure if this speaks to what trustee Kennedy was saying, that it seems to be a little off balance sheet financing. And for what reason, I'm not sure.
Thank you. Up next, trustee Kennedy, question time.
Just wondering, what generation iPads do we have that are being updated?
Can I ask a question? Trustee Sanders, what does off balance sheet mean? I've just never heard that term. I'm not an accountant, so.
Trustee.
What does that, what does that term mean, my question?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll just go back to that question. Can you clarify, can you clarify?
Yeah, it just speaks to what trustee Kennedy was saying, that, you know, if it went through the regular process, it would, it would sort of be working towards generating deficit or bring a sort of deficit. So by doing this, we're kind of avoiding that. So it's, it's stuff that doesn't go through the regular process. It's, it's coming from sort of over here, and it, it doesn't impact our, our bottom line, our P and L, our profit line.
No, it's just, it's a term I wasn't, I was not aware of. Is that, is that a common term or is, okay, I just didn't know if it was a derogatory term or not. It's not a derogatory term.
No, no, it's just an accounting term.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, trustee Kennedy, sorry to interrupt you.
Good, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wondering, what iPad generation do we currently have that's being updated?
It's not, sorry, Mr. Chair, through you to trustee Kennedy. It's not so, I, I don't have the exact generation, trustee Kennedy, because the updates are, it's our older ones. Whatever our older ones are in the system, it won't take the updates anymore. So when you go to update, it's at the end of its useful life. So we can't, probably seen on some of your iPhones, it gets to a point where you can't use it. Well, you would use it with your kids and such, because you're on your home network. With ours, we have to be on the latest updates for all of our Apple for that security. The actual iPad version, we get so many now, you get the iPad Air, iPad Mini, all these different ones. It's whatever one are running on the software that's no longer updatable. And that's the ones we need to replace and pull out of the system. So I don't have the model numbers that are being updated. Yeah.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy.
So they're expired now. We're not getting any updates right now.
We're right in the last one.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy.
Just wondering, is there anything in our current budget that we can, maybe PD, that we can use to, you know, use this instead of our, our, our reserves? Like, is there any other money we can find elsewhere for partial, for some?
Trustee Kennedy? Sorry, trustee Superintendent Loft?
At this point in time, everything has been, sorry, through Mr. Chair, trustee Kennedy, at this point in time, everything has been budgeted. Having said that, at the end of the year, we still may not typically, it's like we had a surplus last year. It's so satisfying to be surplus and deficit that we might not even utilize these reserves at the end of the year. I, I don't know at this point in time. So it could be at the point where we've allocated money for it, but if we have savings across the system, we're not going to dip into our reserves. We're not going to use our reserves just to use our reserves. If we don't need to at the end of the year, then we're not going to be dipping into our reserves at all.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy.
Sort of like the other one with the technology, or it was only 100,000, this is more. Would this be, it would all happen before August though, right? Like, this would definitely be the whole 614.
Through Mr. Chair, that is correct, trustee Kennedy. Yeah, this is one of those one and done kind of things that were.
Trustee Kennedy? Thank you. Up next is trustee Carabella. You have three minutes, question time.
I guess I'm going to ask, my question is about tech. Do we have like a technology policy about, you know, certain things being updated at certain times or? Do we have a policy or just as need, as need rises?
Sorry, through Mr. Chair, trustee Carabella. We have a policy on technology, like usage and proper use of technology and such. As far as though on when to update it, I don't believe that's mentioned in the policy. I, I don't, or procedure, policy or procedure. I do know that just because of the vulnerabilities that everyone, everybody around this table is impacted by cybersecurity, that one of the new things now, and why it's more prevalent today than it was 10 years ago, is we have to make sure that we're getting all the updates from, in this case, Apple or Windows on the Windows side, because they're not supporting that in a couple of years either for Windows 10. So we have to make sure that any kind of holes within the software are plugged. And right now, Apple won't be plugging a number of their older products. So they're almost, essentially they're, they're wrecked to us. They're useless to us because we need to make sure they're on the most up-to-date software, just for our vulnerabilities.
Trustee Carabella?
And then, so again, if this, if we didn't this time take it from allocated reserves, where would we have taken this money to do this initiative?
We couldn't afford to do it. Sorry, I've said that a few times too. Sorry, Mr. Chair. We wouldn't be able to do it at this level. Wouldn't be able to start doing it. We just don't have that money to be able to do that. It's, if you look at from the budget perspective, how much we receive from a funding for technology, it really hasn't changed, right? That's one of those numbers that hasn't changed. Yet, all the expectation from all boards in the province around cybersecurity, just on that one area alone, has increased tremendously in the last number of years. So we don't necessarily have all the resources to be able to replace all these all at once. It would have to be a much more staggered approach to it, to be able to do it.
Trustee Carabella?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, trustee, vice chair Murphy.
Thank you. My question was just, I'm sorry if it's been covered already, but where did the 614,000 come from? Is there a specific need? I'm just curious about that number, number. Thank you.
Uh, it was part of the, the allocation that we had. We had about 964. I know it's an odd number, trustee Murphy. But it was, we had 964 unallocated reserves. So when we took the other two, this is what was left. So that's how we got to it. There's no mathematical equation per se that went into it, because this is the funding that's going to be, it's a two-for-one, right? The schools put in money, we put in up to 614,000. And, and that's what we have. So that's our piggy bank to share. And once we've utilized that funding, we don't have any more to, to do that, that 50-50 split.
Trustee Murphy?
Yeah, thank you to follow up. There's no specific number of units that are required. It's just whatever purchase. Just trying to understand like what this is covered exactly.
Uh, through Mr. Chair, to trustee Murphy. Because each, it depends on what the school, you like, is it iPads, minis, there's iPad Air, iPads, regular iPads. Then you go on to the, your computers. Each school has different needs. So to say that it's going to buy such, such number of iPads and, and Windows-based computers, I, I can't say that, because each school has their own specific needs. But we thought, again, we brought the senior admin table as well, that this was the best way to be able to say, we're assisting. We know this is a problem. This is a way that we can assist, assuming we have trustee approval for, which is kind of what I mentioned before, and hence we've brought it here tonight.
Thank you. I'll pass it to Director Klein to add something more.
And I will definitely bounce that over to Superintendent Croll, who has, I think, some thoughts on the technology.
Sure. And, and there, I think the reason that Superintendent Loft maybe, excuse me, struggling to answer that question is because the needs are so different from classroom to classroom, from school to school, and from panel to panel. So for example, iPads are really important in kindergarten for documentation. It's one of the ways in which we make sure that we're recording what students are actually able to do, our skills that they're accruing. So when we open a kindergarten classroom, we provide that classroom with iPads to make sure the educators have the tools that they need. So we, you know, we open classrooms this year, brand-new iPads for those. We opened classrooms six, seven years ago, those iPads are starting to reach their lifecycle. We provide Chromebooks for, usually for students in grade seven and eight, because that sort of matches the, the need that they have. And so we have, we have libraries or carts of Chromebooks that are available for those. Those have a life as well. We have computer labs in secondary, computer labs that are specific for computer programming, computer labs that are used for our business classes. Those are window-based, Windows-based systems generally. And again, some of those would be aging out and no longer able to be used with, with Windows 10 being phased out. So I, and again, it's different from school to school as to when they purchased and then implemented that. So the $614,000 is, would be allocated across the system to help each individual school with the needs that they have, to make sure that they've got the tools that they need for educators and the tools that, that students need to be able to be learning. I hope that helps.
Trustee, vice chair Murphy?
I do have another follow-up. So what I'm trying to understand is, is there an annual budget for technology? Or was there anything spent last year? How often is, does this amount of spending need to take place? I'm just trying to wrap the number really.
Uh, through Mr. Chair, to trustee Murphy. Yeah, you're correct. There was definitely spending expenses last year in technology. The big difference this year is a number that are coming due all at once because of this change, not change, but the requirement with updating the software in the computers. And the number that we do the survey across the system, how many schools are being impacted by this? So it's not that we weren't updating, we were. But as you know, even just going back 10 years ago, going through COVID, the number of products that we've put in the system has grown tremendously. The funding hasn't grown, but definitely the expectation in the system has grown for us to cover all these needs of the system. So what we have today is very different than what we had 10 years ago, and it'll be probably very different from what we had 10 years from now. But the key reason why we're bringing it here is to make sure that we pull out, make sure all that are, are expired or no longer updatable are pulled out of the system, so it's not a vulnerability to our network. And in order to do that, we need to kind of help backfill some of those systems. We won't be able to backfill them all. Please understand that. This, there's, it won't be necessary to backfill every single one, but we definitely could help put a dent in that outstanding, the outstanding units that are being taken out.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. Vice chair Murphy, you still have time?
I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is trustee Kelly. Trustee Kelly, you have the floor. Three minutes, question time.
Sorry, thank you, through you, Chair. I was curious, what exactly will happen to the old iPads and Windows computers? Like, will they be recycled, donated for parts? What exactly will be happening to the old tech that, that we're going to be releasing?
Thank you, through Mr. Chair, to trustee, trustee Kelly. Sorry, I almost said Kirsten, so I apologize, trustee Kelly. What's going to happen is we actually have a disposal program where we dispose of our expired technology. So there are some, I guess there's a little bit of, there's some value in these old products and their parts or what they can. But we have to be careful when we do kind of get rid of all of our old technology to make sure that all the drives and everything are completely destroyed, because you have the privacy issue, right? So that's the other issue you have. So in addition to cybersecurity, you have privacy issues. So that's the other side where we, I believe we have a, I believe we do have a company that comes in and helps us to recycle our expired technology.
Trustee Kelly?
Okay, thank you for that. And one more is, is this, just based on like other trustees' questions, do we have a number on how many iPads, again, tech will be replaced? Like, again, I can just tell from, based on what we've been discussing, it's just been generally needed and just discussed. So I don't know if there is a specific number required on this, but just curiosity.
Superintendent Loft?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kelly. Uh, I don't have the number, just because the needs are so different for each school and where they want to put them, their technology needs to. So whether it's an iPad Mini or an iPad or Windows-based computer, I just don't have that. Like, they might want to pull an iPad and replace it with a Chromebook. Because the Chromebook, you can, you can replace it with a Chromebook. It's similar. So it's, it's kind of more on the, the needs of the school and what they feel is best for their community. And it's kind of what Superintendent Croll mentioned as well. So, so I don't have the exact number for you, trustee Kelly.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Makes sense. Sorry, sorry to interrupt. Yeah, no, that makes sense. No more questions. Thank you.
Up next is trustee Yabo, with the floor, three minutes.
Thank you, through you, Chair. Thank you. Um, I was just wondering, how do you think students would be affected by this? Is there like a timeline for the rollout of new technology and would this in any way hinder students in their education in any way? Thank you.
Superintendent Loft, great question. What I have, yeah, if we're pulling system units out of the school, it will have, we can, we can't replace them all one-for-one. There definitely will be an impact. I'm getting information more from, at the school level, so the principals have come to me with the numbers that they, that they need. Will they see? I would guess probably yes. But a large part of it too, if you go back to COVID, we added, so, and we had extra funding for it. We had all this extra funding for a lot of the systems, right? So we really grew. We bought more technology in the, in the history of our board in that period of time. So now, what was, like, that was 2020, 2021, we started buying it. So some of that stuff is kind of further down the, the lifecycle. That's going to be something we really need to start planning for as well, because we did increase so much. Hopefully, those systems are still in production in our system. The one thing too, we've, we've become aware of is a lot of schools, and I, and I get it, they purchase a lot of refurb, refurbished products. So it's not necessarily the newest, most greatest updating system, but it's a few years old, makes sense, right? You want to go buy, it's going to save yourself a few dollars, you can buy more for the kids, more for the students. Problem is, when it's all tied to, to the number of years it's supported, if you've given up now two or three years in the front end by buying a refurbished one, and the last, the, the lifetime of the product is six to seven years, you've just given away three years of that, and now you only have it for four years. So, I don't know if it's making sense. So if, if we would have bought, that's another thing that we realize. We're looking at it, and we're saying, by buying these refurbished ones, you think it's a good deal, right? We're saving a couple bucks for each one, can buy more. But now in three or four years, when they become obsolete, now you've got to replace them again. So that's something else we've been looking at as a result of all finding out all this new, exciting things to.
Thank you, trustee Yabo. Go ahead. Do you have any other questions?
Uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so we have completed question time on, on the motion. Can we have the motion up again, please? So I shall close question time and open up debate time on the motion in front of us. The main motion was moved by trustee Ohan Chanada, seconded by trustee Powell. Trustee Kennedy, you have your hand up. This is debate time, three minutes. Give me a second, please. Okay, good. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So again, just with the reserve issue, I just feel like they should be used for emergencies. Now, Apple does give a five-year product support per product, so I think we might have known. Maybe we can do that a little bit earlier. I just think the precedent for, again, in-year moves between, for, for budgets, I'm just concerned that we're going to continue to do that. I think we can still do this without pulling from reserves. You can do it anyway and just have a deficit at the end of the year and take from reserves at that time. So I don't see why we have to take from reserves now, when it could just be done later, but it will be part of the, of the final audited, audited statements. So if we can find a way right now to find it from existing revenues, I will support this budget immediately. But I'm not comfortable using, using reserves. Rather, just use the money and have the deficit budget later. But I'm not comfortable using, using reserves, rather just use the money and have the deficit budget later. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Superintendent Loft, you'd like to speak?
Just, yeah, and just to, through you, Mr. Chair, trustee, trustee Kennedy, I, I agree, that's, that's an option. But we're being transparent by bringing it forward to trustees today and letting everyone know that this is what we're asking for. So that's, that's the reason, like theoretically, yeah, it's the same, it's the same end result if you just buy it and then go into a deficit. But we're being transparent by letting trustees know this is the intention. So that's, that's.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. Any other trustees would like to debate? Comments? If not, I shall call the vote on the motion number three of the main motion that was moved by trustee Ohan Chanada, seconded by trustee Powell. With that, I shall call the vote. Trustee Saunders, opposed. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee Yabo?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Powell? Trustee Kennedy?
Opposed.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
In favor.
Trustee, Vashem Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
So we have five in favor, three opposed, no abstention, motion carries. Thank you, trustees, for the long discussion, debate. We shall move on to item number 9.2, 9.2. Request for staff report on fees charged to students. This item was a notice of motion at the last board meeting and is now an action item. Trustee Saunders, can you please read the motion? Following motion was shared, okay. Whereas the Halton Catholic District School Board is in an environment of increased financial pressures and scrutiny by the Ministry of Education and the provincial government, whereas the Halton Catholic District School Board needs to engage the Ministry of Education in identifying and bridging funding gaps, whereas costs are increasing, costs are increasingly being passed on to students and their families for activities previously paid for by the board. Whereas it, it is the focus of the board to continue to enhance the educational experience of our students and obtain funding to meet these programs needs, be resolved that the Director of Education be directed to request board staff prepare a report for the next regular board meeting disclosing all current or anticipated fees charged to all students from junior kindergarten to grade 12, and identify if these are new fees within the last two academic years, 23, 24, 24, 25, so that the board can develop plans to obtain funding to bridge these gaps. Thank you, trustee Saunders, for reading the motion. I will need a second up for this item, please. Second to trustee Carabella.
Yep, Carabella.
Trustee Saunders' motion is in order, I'm placing it on the floor for trustees to discuss. Trustee Saunders, you have five minutes to open discussion, just give me one second. Start, your time starts now.
Okay, thank you. You're just short and sweet. So, you know, we're facing funding shortages where, you know, we requested the province to come in, and then if we're not, and I think part of the picture we have to paint is to say, you know, we are the lowest funded board in the province. And in addition, we've had to pass, you know, I don't know, hundreds of thousands of dollars or to parents to pay for programs that we used to pay for. This year, we discovered that we have a new fee for our AP program. So I think that it's information we need, I think it's information we need to be able to reference, particularly when, when the audit takes place as a demonstration of, you know, what we're doing to make sure that we, we keep, you know, students' activities going, but at, at the cost of having our families having to bear some of the burden. And then, and it's sort of the sidelight too, is that I sort of like to know where we're, we're charging fees, because I'm concerned that we have families that, you know, can't afford to pay these fees, and I know we have options to help them, but there may be people that won't come forward, you know, out of shame, asking for money with a hat in hand. And I'm just concerned that we may be going down this road a bit quick. So I think we, before we even make any decisions or start planning, we need to know what exactly we are asking our parents to.
Trustee Saunders, with that, I shall open up question time, trustee, three minutes question time. First up, we have trustee Agnew, you're the floor.
My privilege before you do that, Mr. Chair, there's this grammatical spelling error at the third whereas. Shouldn't say past, should say past, M-P-A-S-S-E-D. Sorry, it's bothering me if somebody could just make that note.
Yeah, noted.
It's just, it's grammatical error.
Uh, give.
Time now for my questions.
Okay, one second, hold on, hold on. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
So one of the questions that I have is, there's a, can you put the motion back up? Sorry. No, I know. So can you pause my time? Because I know you're quick with the trigger on the, on the timing button. So if you could just.
Yeah, sure, no problem.
All right, let's throw you for that loop. I can probably ask it, I can start. In the first whereas, I believe it is, there's a comment there with respect to us being under scrutiny. I'm wondering if, if someone could, I, I don't know that we have been placed under any kind of scrutiny by the MOE or the provincial government. I'm just wondering if, if that's concerning, if that's the case, if somebody could speak to that?
Thank you. I shall pass it on to trustee Saunders first, because it's his motion. Trustee Saunders, would you like to respond to that, please?
I think it's just a general comment that I think the finances of school boards are being watched much more carefully now. I think, you know, you know, you see things in the paper where school boards are doing things that maybe in the past were not questioned. And I think that this is becoming more and more prevalent. I mean, we even have an example in our board where, you know, some expenditures ended up in question. And I just think that's a general statement that there is more.
So I just wanted clarity from staff.
I'll pass it on to Superintendent Loft to comment.
Yeah, thank you through you, Mr. Chair, trustee, I guess, Agnew, and I guess trustee Saunders. If that's what superintendent, trustee Saunders' intent was, yeah, we have not been under contact with the ministry, but there has been, as we all know, there's been, school has been in the news a little more than they have, so.
Thank you. I just wanted clarity as to whether or not it was us specifically, is the way the, the motion read, or if it was just in general. The other question that I had is, could somebody provide, other than the example that trustee Saunders gave, can somebody give me some examples of these costs that we are now no longer funding and passing over? I'm aware of costs like the cost to play volleyball, or the cost to go on a school trip. I mean, those have inherently always been there, the cost of grad, those fees will go up because the costs overall go up. But could somebody give me some examples specifically of things that we used to fund, that we no longer fund, that are being passed along to students and families?
Director Klein, your staff would like to answer this question. Superintendent Kroll?
Sure, certainly, and through you. I have shared information with trustees about the, the cost of AP, there being a fee implemented for the AP program. If Superintendent Merrick was here and he had to leave, I believe he would share that we did have to make changes to some of the resources that we provided in the past to support things like ice hockey and swimming, where we were able to absorb the cost of the rentals for those facilities that we won't, we were not able to absorb with last year's budget. Those are two that come top of mind. Honestly, I can't think of many more fees that, that we have made a conscious decision to pass on to families where we used to pay those.
Thank you, trustee Agnew.
That's it for me.
Thank you. Any other trustees have questions? Question time. Trustee Carabella, your hand is up, trustee, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm, I'm curious about these extra fees, like for programming. I'm more concerned like for, or sports. I think that, or what's my question? Maybe I don't have a question. I'll probably wait for the comments. Are, are there fees that are asked for sports?
I can.
Superintendent Kroll?
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Carabella, I can try and answer your question. So student athletes in secondary certainly pay for the sports that they play. The sports they play, if you're playing badminton, which is mostly run in our school gyms, you're paying very little. If you're playing a sport like, as we mentioned, ice hockey or football, where there's significant equipment, you have to rent outside facilities to be able to do those, schools don't have ice rinks or pools, then you're paying for those facilities. What we've had to do with, with regards to our budget over the last couple of years, you know, and certainly conversations that we've had around this table where we're being asked to sort of provide a balanced budget, we have to look at the things in which we paid for in the past, say, can we still afford to pay for that? And so when we look at introducing costs to support programs like AP, or to be able to support, have parents help bear the cost of athletics, it's not done lightly. But we have to consider that, we have to fund our core programming, we have to fund what it is that we do day to day to be able to make sure the students are achieving, believing, belonging, and becoming. So we have to look, then are things that are optional, are nice to have, things that the board should continue to pick up a cost of? So to answer your question, students do pay for athletics. Most cases, the costs are minimal. Now, I mentioned they're very minimal, but in secondary, the price of, of things, like I say, where there are facility rentals specifically, or tournaments that students are participating in, those are increased costs for students. But as, as alluded to by trustee Saunders earlier, schools, I do a really good job of ensuring that students that can't afford to pay are supported. I can tell you that from my time as, as a school principal. I'm proud of that work that we do in the system, to be able to say that we don't dis, we don't, we don't provide opportunities that are only for some and others. So when there's costs involved, school principals work really hard, errands work with HCF, they work really hard to be able to support families, so those opportunities are available for all students.
Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. So I, I guess I, fees, things like the grad trip and trips like that, grade seven, grade eight trips, those are not considered fees, those are different. This is not, we're not asking for this type of fee, correct? Saunders, trustee Saunders?
Trust, your question, trustee Saunders?
Yes.
Ask the chair. Thank you. Trustee Saunders, would you like to respond?
I don't know, I mean, I can just go from experience when my children were there, those fees were, are not the fees that I'm looking at. It's more like participation fees.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Carabella, go ahead.
One more follow up. Any of the sports, when you try out for a team, do they have to pay a fee? Because I, I did kind of hear hearsay, but like when you're trying out for the basketball team, there was a fee to try out for a team. Is that anything you're aware of?
Superintendent Kroll?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not aware of any schools that would charge a tryout fee. I'm not aware of any schools that would have an application fee to a program, that wouldn't be within our practices. Students pay to be part of teams or programs, they don't pay to apply to try out.
Trustee Carabella? Okay, thank you. Up next is, go ahead, Superintendent Kroll.
Sorry, the only situation where I can think of where that might be a case is where it was something like ice hockey, where if you had to go and participate on the ice rented by the school, that's the only situation I can think of where there might be a fee to try out, but you're literally just paying for the ice that you're using at that time.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Up next is trustee Kennedy. Three minutes of question time, time starts now.
Yeah, I'm just wondering regarding, for the comment, I think it was Superintendent Kroll that we weren't able to absorb the cost, like, you know, we core competency, but we talked about well-being, but we just heard we had a $12 million surplus. So I'm just wondering, and we just used that surplus for, for a couple items today. I just don't know why we couldn't use some of that for some of these items, like why, why is that not one of the items that we have today?
Superintendent Loft, thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. Well, I guess we better clarify, I may well start despite clarifying the surplus, as we know it's difficult to spend a surplus, that's why we're bringing it today to trustees to approve us using our surplus. The last year's surplus wasn't really, $7 million was potentially balance sheet, right? It wasn't a, a surplus per se, it was the $5 million that we're speaking about primarily that we allocated to bring our reserves back up to the 2% and that 964 or so that we just discussed a few minutes before. So to say that there's that surplus to use, we just can't go and use it without bringing something to board to, to approve that. The other thing too is by us utilizing, and I'm going to go back to hockey, because I think hockey is probably our most expensive one, by us using to pay for an optional program such as hockey, we're taking that money out of the school for the rest of our students. So that is also something to be aware of as well. So if we did it for hockey, the number of kids that are playing hockey, then we'd be subsidizing the hockey program, the extracurricular sports, or it would come directly out of our budget. So just like football has a cost and all the other sports have a cost, hockey has a cost. So in order to run a hockey team, you need to have the rent, to have the ice, and it's something that's really the participants that, that are getting the benefit of that.
You, trustee Kennedy?
Yeah, I understand, I just think, you know, it's like, we all pay taxes, but we don't all use all the benefit, or some use more than maybe what we're paying. So I just think, you know, like for, another one is transportation, like we have some programs that students have transportation for, or activities, and some that they don't. Like, how is, how are those decisions made? I mean, like, so what I'm hearing as a trustee, like I'm hearing a lot of parents say, oh, it went up this much, you know, and we don't really get that, I didn't get that information in advance. So it would be helpful, I don't necessarily know what we needed to motion, but it would have been helpful maybe at the beginning, beginning of the year to tell trustees, this is what's happening, this is why it's happening. You know, you probably would realize parents would be reaching out to us, because they're confused. And I just think, you know, as part of the transparency that was mentioned earlier with the budget, I just think these things would be beneficial to know. I don't, hope it's not too much work. But I think that, that's, that's what I'm seeing.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Superintendent Loft?
Just to mention about, I guess, going back to transparency, we're talking about transparency. I guess if we had known those questions ahead of time, we maybe been able to address them, we could be able to respond to those type of questions. I thought we've done a, a pretty good job of responding to them, but if there is any additional ones that you're getting, trustee Kennedy, I'm more than welcome to take those questions and, and hopefully have a one-on-one conversation to kind of maybe explain some of that to you.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Any further questions?
Yeah, so just again, I've seen it so many times, but I mean, we, we do have discretionary items that we can spend money on, but there is a decision level made at, I don't know, a management committee or something to decide, where do we want to spend this discretionary money? PD was a big one, I mentioned it six times, right? That is 1.1 million. It just, it, I think it would be nice if maybe we could put some of that money back sometimes, not always to the board level, but also at the, at the student and parent level.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Superintendent Loft?
Thank you, and that's a great point, trustee Kennedy. That's, one of the items we brought forward tonight was the technology to benefit all our students in the classroom. So that was an example of putting money back into the system, back into the school. There's a, something for us to, to, to kind of work towards.
The only thing that I just wanted to add is, if you look at the changes that we made in fees for this year, there are optional programs, there are things that are, and I have a kid who's in AP, and I have a kid who's a hockey player. So like, like I'm affected by those things as a parent as much as, as anyone in this room. We, when we look at what's nice to have versus what we need to have, I guess we'd have to go back and look at last year's budget, say, where is that $200,000 that we used to use for pools and ice? Where are we taking that out now? So what are we not paying for now to be able to pay for that? We've made a commitment to increase the amount of resources in our schools, to increase the amount of paper, the amount of consumables, the amount of technology, that was all in last year's budget. That would be $200,000 less if we decided that we wanted to keep the fees, covering the fees centrally for things like ice hockey and pools. And I know that, that, as I said earlier, there was a lot of chatter and, and conversation making sure that we had a balanced budget for last year. We were not to, to sort of go into deficit. So that's $200,000 we have to find somewhere else. So I understand that parents are concerned, and maybe it's new, I, I understand that. I think we've tried to be as transparent as we can, especially with parents. We were upfront this year about the change in fees, we certainly committed, like, we made that known to schools early so they could communicate that, that, that information to parents early, so that if parents couldn't pay for that, they have an opportunity to work with the school to find a way to make sure their child could still participate. But again, under, when we were looking at last year's budget, that was a decision that we made at the time, that was ultimately passed at this table, that we could no longer afford to pay for those things, because we'd have to find $200,000 somewhere else to pay for those.
Trustee Kennedy?
Yeah, like I think the challenge I have with the budget is, again, we see budget as one-line items, and there's massive amounts of information in there, and I have no idea what's in there, right? So that, that's the issue. Like, I feel like we should be able to go to the budget, click on the budget, and it populates, and it's like, here's all the line items, right? Here's what it was before. We see like high-level items.
Let, let me, let me.
Fifty things in there, right?
Let me bring us back to, we have, we are going in all directions, so.
Yeah, just.
Let us try to focus on the motion in front of us and have this discussion. If we can, we can continue all night long.
I guess the question I have is, let's say, let's say this motion doesn't pass, I mean, if trustees need to know what costs have gone up, can you, can you give us maybe the top few, so that if parents ask us, we can have something to let them know why this happened?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think I just, I think I did. Like, I think I'm, and I'm being as transparent as I can. I don't think you need this motion for you to ask questions, like, call us, send us an email. There are trustees around this table that regularly send emails to say, hey, can you help me with this? And I'm happy to write that information for you. I, I don't think you need this to do that. I think I've been very upfront with you about the fees that we have changed for this year. I don't think that this will bring anything new, but that's just my opinion.
Superintendent Laub?
And through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. And I too have also made myself available on many occasions for any questions. So I don't know if it's fair to mention a comment like that when we have made ourselves available.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy.
Yeah, no, so I didn't mean, you have definitely made yourself available. I just mean a preemptive email. You know, it's September the first, trustees, here's what's going to happen. Here are some of the higher line items that might be increased. You might get some questions from parents. And just like something like, that's what I'm saying, something in advance. Because I did personally get a lot of questions about this. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Up next is trustee Ohan Chanara. Question time, three minutes.
Thank you, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question to trustee Saunders. So is the spirit of the motion just to get fees? Or is it to find out the cost for all optional programming? So you're talking about in the motion to get fees, listing all the fees that we're charging our parents. Is there also a favor for getting funding? What else do we pay for optional programs out of our board budget?
Trustee Saunders, would you like to respond?
Yeah, no, it's just information. It's just, just to sort of know where we stand. I don't think there's any harm in us knowing this and I'm not sure why, why the board wouldn't want to give us this information. This is just, you know, so we know what our parents are up against. As trustee Kennedy says, we do get questions about this and it would just be good information to have, and particularly as we go down the road when it comes to, you know, the ministry, hopefully, you know, coming in and asking us, you know, what kind of money do you need? And we'll say, well, here's, here's another example of where we are self-funding. So yeah, it's just, it's just information for us to use in discussions going forward. So that's all. This is not a question of should we have fees? Should we have, you know, it's, it's no, it's not anything like that. Just that it's information that I think we could use.
Thank you. Just on another note, it does take a lot of resources to collect all this information from all our 60 schools. So it's a lot of effort that will go from start and we know we are short-stopped. Anyway, I'll pass it to superintendent Laub.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, Mr. Chair, and through you to trustee Saunders. I think it's important to mention as well, especially given what's in the media right now about boards being under some form of audit. We have not heard from the ministry that we're on any kind of audit. So just to make that clear, we have not received any information. I'll mention twice that the audit's coming. We have not heard anything from the ministry saying that we are under any audit other than our regular external audits, which is a regular course of doing business. So just to make it clear, we haven't heard anything.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for letting me jump in because that's what my question was unanswered and maybe because I'm in the car. My question, why do you want all of the reports of everything that we pay for optional programming? So it was mentioned that we have transportation for optional programming. Do you want that as well? Do you want the ministry to see how we're making out what you require that as well?
Trustee Saunders?
No, no, I'm just interested in fees that parents are paying.
But the, the motion, the way it's written, it says everything from junior kindergarten to grade 12. So it does mean all the fees. So, so you're saying it's, it's not the optional program that you're interested in?
Well, no, it's just the fees. Like if a parent is paying a fee, you can paint it anywhere you want, color it, you know, wherever you want. Just if a parent is paying a fee, it'd be nice to know what, what to think.
Trustee Ohan Chanara, got the answer?
Can I just get clarification, please, Mr. Chair?
One second. Superintendent Laub?
I know we just mentioned tonight, I know I think trustee Carabella mentioned about grad fees. Well, that is a fee that's paid by the student. You said that's not included. So I'm, I'm a little concerned, like not sort of confused as to what's a fee because that would be a grad fee, something that all parents pay. As a parent of a student that's formerly of our system, I had to pay a grad fee. So that is a fee, an optional fee. So I don't know what's, what's considered a fee and what's not considered a fee.
Well, give it a shot and then we'll see what we've got.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Director Klein?
Okay, so with all due respect, giving it a shot might, is way too broad a field of play for staff. So the term, I think the question still remains. I don't think there's specifics here. And I don't want to put staff late in the night trying to gather information on an ambiguous request.
It's not ambiguous. Trustee Saunders? Trustee Saunders? Okay. The motion is what we're talking about here. The motion gives direction to staff to do a task. So if the motion is not clear, okay, task, staff will give you exactly what they understand, perceive from there. So questions going back and forth to you. I'm, I want to know from you if you are clear about the motion.
I am clear, yeah. If, if the parent is paying a fee, then it would be good information to have.
But that does not.
Regardless of whatever.
It's not stated in the motion here.
Well, it just says if they're paying a fee.
All, all the, all right from JK to grade 12.
Right, thanks. That's it.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, trustee?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Superintendent Laub?
Because just for clarity, because this work will probably fall to me among with, along with Aaron in his department. Is it fees for optional programs that you're really trying to get at, trustee Saunders? Because I just want to make sure that we're providing the information that you want.
Nope, just fees.
So, okay, so I guess, but you had said earlier, so that I'm clear, that you're not interested in field trip fees. So can you just help me understand?
So I imagine in the report it would say field trip fees. So something like that. That's, that's all, that's all that we're looking for. Then, you know, it doesn't have to be, there doesn't have to be numbers attached. It says that parents pay field trip fees. Okay, that's good enough.
Okay, so, so let's, let's direct all questions to the chair, please. Director Klein?
Again, I think the question still stands. I think it's ambiguous. A fee could be something within the realm of charity where we have some event where we're raising money for development of peace or something and you need this much, is that a fee?
If the word fee is attached to it, I would say yes.
So if the word fee isn't used, then it's not a fee?
Well, I, I think you're, you're trying to be very ambiguous yourself. So I'm saying, we would like to know.
Trustee, trustee Saunders, just answer the question.
If the word fee is there or the parents are paying for it, if you want to stick to the word fee, then we'll stick with the word fee. But that's what the motion says.
So if you call it another word, say registration?
Well, I, I'm asking for fees. If you, if you don't want to answer it because you call it something else, I guess that's up to the board, but I'm asking for fees.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, thanks, thanks. We'll end over there. Trustee Ohan Chanara, your next question.
I do, sorry for that, but I do have a follow-up through you, Mr. Chair. So once we use labor dollars of our staff to create this report to give to us at the board, what will be our potential action items following that data we're given?
So this is asking for a report to the board. So what will, the action item is that staff will bring a report to the board. That's it, terms over there. So I do not know the end game. I do not want to speculate on the end game. It's really up to trustees to take the report and, and and do whatever they want with this report. So that's, that's what I would look at, look at the, yeah, and this is the answer to your question. Trustee Ohan Chanara? It's a report being asked. I do not know the end game.
Right, okay. If I was to put a motion, I would want to know, can I want this information to make decisions on this? But that's fine, I probably answer, thank you.
Okay, up next, trustee Powell. You have three minutes and question time.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't want to keep debating this because I think it's very confusing. But I'm, I still don't understand what fees are. And it's like, is it a pizza order? Like is it, I've had four kids go through this school. I still have kids in this school. I'm still paying fees. But it could be something as simple as a check that gets returned at the end of, when your equipment is returned. So that's not a fee. That's you write a check, it doesn't get cashed. If my kid loses their equipment, it's cashed. Is that a fee? It's, it, like I have grad fees coming up, okay? I'll pay grad fees. But we all know that. How do you even determine what a, what a field trip is? And then a pizza hot lunch, is that a fee? Like this is ridiculous. I'm sorry, but.
Sorry, trustee, trustee, trustee Powell? I would not speculate on a trustee's motion.
It's reasonable.
We cannot be calling, no, no, I, I, I get it, your feeling, it's ridiculous. But again, it's a motion, it's a motion here, all motions, all, all motions.
We're asking for clarity and it is not being given.
Yeah, all motions are, once it's tabled, it's a valid motion, belongs to the board of trustees. If you feel something, I don't think it is appropriate to speculate on some other trustee's intention. So you have an option here. We all have the option to, to vote, vote on it. So you can discuss, you can debate on it, but when we start speculating on intentions, let's stay away from it. Thank you.
I'm very, very confused.
I know. So let's ask your questions if you have questions.
My question is, how do you, how do you determine what is a fee?
So, okay, I'll put it to trustee Saunders again. Trustee Saunders, would you like to respond to the question?
So I would say a fee would be when a parent takes money out of their pocket and gives it to the school. That would be a fee.
So.
I need further clarity because again, if I'm writing a check for football equipment, I'm writing a check, it doesn't get cashed.
So that, that's, that's where the motion is, the clarity.
These are extracurricular, these are sports, these are fees for sports that are being, they're extra. That's not part of school. I don't have to put my kid in sports. I don't have to do a pizza lunch.
But again, trustee Paul, it's the motion, the way it's worded, staff finds it ambiguous as to the direction they would get if it passes. I know you're confused, but again, the option to trustees is to, is to vote on this motion. So if you need clarity, then I asked trustee Saunders and he explained that anything that comes out of parents' pocket is a fee. So that's what I heard, correct? So anything that parents spend.
Hot lunches are considered a fee, that's coming out of my pocket.
Trustee Saunders?
Yes, if it comes out of your pocket and goes to the school, that's a fee.
Yeah, so, 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 yeah. I, I, I understand that we are confused and it's bound to happen. But the motion is the motion, the way it's on, laid on table and trustee Saunders tried to explain his intent. But we have to be, you know, take it the way it's written. Okay. Any further questions, trustee Paul? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have trustee Philbert. Trustee Philbert, you have three minutes.
Perfect, thank you. I apologize, this has been answered already. And I just want to start by clarifying that as a student, alongside with multiple siblings in this board, my parents, my parents, all the fees of the students, those are typically clarified. And I'm just confused, or my question more so for trustee Saunders is, how will this impact students more than it is now? Because I feel like all of these are made very clear and students and their families are likely aware of the supports within the board. And I just want to know how this would specifically be helpful to students when most of this is already being addressed.
Thank you, trustee Philbert. Trustee Saunders, would you like to respond?
Yeah, well, for instance, last night we had a very enlightening discussion about fees. The, are we allowed to discuss that or was that, was that a?
No, if you want to answer trustee Philbert's question.
Yeah, so I mean, the, sorry, and the question was, yeah, they know what the fees are. But we had a very enlightening discussion last night on fees, which I think informed me about our AP program. And I think at one point it was discussed that we'd be, we'd be prepaying a substantial amount of fees when we're only reducing the amount of money we send to the, to each school by a certain amount. We would have a much larger amount being paid in fees. And the question was, where do those fees sit? Are they fenced? Do we use them for the program or do they use for the programs? So I think that's a piece of information that was very enlightening. And I think that this information might bring forward other enlightening issues and questions. And it may inform us going forward. So that's, that's what we're about.
Trustee Philbert, does it answer your question?
Yes, I just had a follow-up if that's okay. I know that some of the trustees and superintendents have mentioned that this would take staff attention into this report. Do you feel that in collecting this information is more valuable to students than what staff would currently be doing? Like how, how do you feel this will positively impact student life? As opposed to negatively impacting staff being taken away from already providing for students?
I think once we sort of have an idea of what we're paying, maybe there's opportunities to look for alternative sources of funding. Maybe there's a way we can fund it by partnerships. Maybe there's a way we can fund it by working with other groups. So I, I think once we know what we're paying, then we can start developing plans to mitigate some of these costs.
Thank you. Trustee Philbert, other questions?
I have no further questions, thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we have completed question time. So you have spoken to this.
I just want to ask if I can propose a friendly amendment?
I have a very good artificial intelligence.
No, not a question.
Paper and pen system here.
I'm wondering if I can propose a friendly amendment, if that's the time to do that.
No, there's not a time for that.
It's not a time at ever.
So this is question time. They're getting to debate time, then you'll have the opportunity.
For friendly?
Yeah. So now we move on to debate time. So trustees, please put your hand up, you have three minutes. Give me a second to reset all timers. And so the debate time is open. Trustees have three minutes to debate. Please put your hand up.
Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we have just, for me, fees would be activity fees, but maybe we'll discuss that with a friendly amendment. Because I can see a bit of ambiguity. I pay pizza lunches too. And that's not, that's not necessary. I do think it can be valuable to trustees. I heard the question, not, I mean, which will hopefully be valuable to students in that if we find that fees are going up a lot and we're hearing a lot of comments, maybe there's other parts of the budget we can see we can cut so that students don't pay enough. I feel like we've done a lot at the board to cut costs and I don't know how much more can be cut with, and I feel that, I'm just worried now that the, the activities for students and the fees parents are paying is really the only place left maybe, or one of the few places left that can continually grow. So it would just be nice to see if there's any trend there. We do get a lot of reports with no action items. That happens all the time. Doesn't necessarily have to have an action item known now. Really, we sometimes need information first. And sometimes we do ask for questions on clarity with things like the budget and we don't always, you know, it's not always easy to see what's in all those line items. You know, legal fees, what are those? Where are they in the budget? in the budget? Those questions continually come up with, with really no direct line item. So, so I would say maybe activities fees would be good to know because that's, that's the feedback I'm getting from parents about, about sports and, and activity costs. Thank you.
Your trustee Kennedy, any other trustee?
Trustee Kennedy, are you going to propose that as an amendment to clarify?
Okay, so you have an amendment, okay?
Was it all correct?
So what would you like to change that to? Trustee Kennedy, you see the word in red. Is that your intent?
Yeah.
Have the word in red. Okay. So trustee Kennedy, you're proposing an amendment. I'll leave a second there. Trustee Carabella, seconds. Okay, so trustee Kennedy, you have five minutes to open.
Yeah, just, just basically, I did hear a lot of ambiguity. I recognize trustees and I see some ambiguity, so I'm just trying to make it a little bit easier. We don't want staff working all hours of the night. I don't, and we don't even have a date, this could take many, this could take a while. So I'm just trying to make it a little bit easier, a little more seamless, a little more focused, that's all.
We have a hand up for question time. I'm opening up question time. Trustee Agnew, question?
I'm trying to understand how board staff would even begin to prepare this report as well, especially with this amendment, when like these are school-based fees. So how is someone here going to know what Corpus Christi is charging or what someone else is charging or what's going to come up? So you're going to have, you're going to have some things that you might be able to use historical information, but I can tell you factually, as someone who still has a child in the system, you can't always anticipate what these are going to be. You can't always tell what they're going to be. They differ from school to school, they differ from grade to grade, they differ from region to region, they differ from student to student. What we have now, we may not have next year, there may not be a program that's being offered next year. So I'm just, to me, like this is, and I think the schools do a really good job at the beginning of every year. Some of them even do it in advance of the next year where they say at the end of the year, here's the fees that are going to help offset for next year. But they do a really great job at the beginning of the year in saying, here's all the fees that are laid out to the best that we know. Here's what they mean, here's what they cover. And then if parents have a question about those fees, how they were derived, why they're there, why they exist, then that's a question for them to bring forward to their principal at the school to inquire. And then that also satisfies if there's concerns. So I, I, so my roundabout way of asking is how is board staff going to write out something when this is really a school-based, school-driven piece with respect, like A B and IP or IP and AP or something different? This, this is a, this is a school-based fee. So how does board staff do that? Maybe someone can help me.
Let me go to director Klein, or he can ask.
Sure, I'll certainly start. I, I don't want more to even add that. I think it's very insightful. I'd also say we were talking about adding to the efforts of people here in this building. I think by your logic, which I agree with, then you're going to be adding to school staffs. So we're talking principals, vice principals, department heads, likely other staff members too, because there's going to be a question about, okay, what, because many principals, particularly in a high school, are busy and active and complex. Just double check, what are we doing for this? I know semester one, you might have been, more again for teachers and others to be adding to it. I'm not sure if anybody else wants to add to that, but those are my thoughts.
Thank you. You get to close. Sorry. Any other trustees have questions? Okay, I shall open up, trustee Carabella.
Well, I just wondered if you even, I don't know, to add also like an optional program fees.
This been moved and seconded.
This one.
Now, would you like to do a friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment.
Amendment, then all trustees, it does be unanimous. So.
Are we voting on that friendly?
We, we are discussing, in debate time, on, on the amendment. So let's go around, finish what we are doing and then take it from there. So any other trustees have, any other trustees have questions? Now, let's open up debate time. Trustees would like to debate on this. So trustee Kennedy, you get, you have three minutes to close discussion. Okay, thank you. I shall call the vote on the amendment. You see on this, on your screen, the item, the word activity in red is added to the original motion. Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Filbert?
Opposed.
Trustee McGuire, sorry, trustee Yebor?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell? Trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
Opposed.
Vice chair Murphy?
So important clarification, we're just voting on this added work, this amendment, correct?
On the original motion as amended.
In favor.
So trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
And trustee Duarte is opposed. So, oh, sorry, trustee Saunders, I'm sorry, I missed you.
In favor.
So we have four in favor, we have five opposed, the amendment fails. Now we'll go back to the main motion. Hold on that. So trustees, we had finished question time on this. We were on debate time. Trustee Kennedy was debating and so I'm opening up the debate again on this item. Any other trustees want to debate on this item? Seeing none, we shall close debate and trustee Saunders, you get three minutes to close debate.
Yeah, so, you know, having, fortunately had three children go through the, the board, I knew what the fees were at the time. It wasn't a confusing issue. If I was paying something, that was a fee. And I could call the principal and ask him, what are the fees? And I'd get an answer. So I don't think it's as arduous a request as it's being trade. I think it's fairly easy. I think it's something you would call the principal and say, what are your, what are your fees your kids are paying? And that would be, you know, about as difficult as it would be. I mean, that, that's been my experience having, you know, over 12 years, three children, I would quite often ask what they were and it was as easy as that. So I, I don't think this was going to be a, a backbreaking effort. I think it's fairly simple and I think it's a, it's good information for us to have because I said, you know, coming from this, we might get information that will lead us to other questions, lead us to opportunities to, to partner with other groups and, you know, might be something we could benefit from. So I think we could, I mean, more information is better than less and transparency is better than not. So I, I think that's why I brought it forward and I think that's what I have to say.
I'll just add once again to the word transparency, it has been clarified by staff. This board is a transparent board. I can, we all as trustees need to be comfortable trusting our staff. Okay? And I, and there should be no doubt now in our mind. So I'd be cautious about the use of the word transparency as far as they're concerned. So, so just let's be cognizant of that. With that, I shall call the vote on the main motion. The main motion was moved by trustee Saunders, seconded by trustee Carabella. Trustee Saunders, how do you?
In favor.
Sorry, I missed you in the order last time. Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Filbert?
Opposed.
Trustee Yebor?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Ohan Chanara?
Opposed.
Vice chair Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
And trustee Duarte is opposed. So we have four in favor, five opposed, motion fails. Shall now move on to our next order of business, which is information items. Item 11, 11.1, director's report, director Klein, please present your report.
We have one before that. Information report, staff report. Sorry.
Long evening. Sorry, we shall move on to item number 10, staff reports. 10.1, 2025, 2026, international student program ISP recruitment, recruitment trips overseas report, director Klein?
Thank you, chair. I'm going to call upon superintendent Cordero, who has for the last few years led the efforts of this board to engage the world here and engage the world outside our doors to ensure that, again, education in its broader sense is one that's not, again, isolated to our own region, but one that, again, reaches out. So trustee, trustee superintendent Cordero?
Thank you, director Klein. Through you, Mr. Chair, I want to thank everyone present for the opportunity to present this staff report. It's really divided into three sections. The first section details, just some, some descriptions about the program itself. I, I've asked that a video that was helped in its production by Strategic Communications, which I'm very thankful of their work, to present that short video to speak a little bit more about the program and for us to listen firsthand to some of the international students who attend our schools and, and their experience in, at HCSB. The second part of the report will speak to the last trip taken overseas to, as a recruitment trip. The two previous trips were reported to in November, so I'm not going to go into a repeat presentation for that. And then the final portion of the report is to offer some recommendations for recruitment trips for the 2025, 2026 school year that could help us continue our good work in recruiting students and diversifying the, the breadth of students from across the world who attend our schools. So I'll begin with the report. The HCSB's international student program provides students with the global competencies, knowledge and experiences they need to succeed in an increasingly interconnected and competitive global community. With an expanded awareness of the world and, and of global citizenship, HCSB students will better appreciate and understand the gifts of diversity and inclusivity. These opportunities provide international students pathways to post-secondary education and afford students an opportunity to transition to pupils of the board. Last year, 35 international students became pupils of the board and to date, HCSB has transitioned an additional 18 international students to pupil of the board status. So I think maybe it's appropriate at this time, stroll if you don't mind, if we can maybe listen to some of these students who are attending our schools with aspirations either to return to their home country and continue their studies in post-secondary or pursue post-secondary education here in Canada or as a family, transition to pupils of the board and families of permanent residence in, in Canada and specifically in the Halton region, attending our Halton schools.
The Halton Catholic District School Board has for generations served the Catholic and greater communities of Halton region, which is Oakville, Milton, Burlington and Halton Hills.
Here at the Halton Catholic District School Board, we welcome students from everywhere in the world. Our program has been growing over the past number of years and I think it's because we have a really good reputation out in the international community.
Hi, everyone. My name is Vi. I'm from Vietnam and currently I'm attending school into Halton Catholic District School Board. They have a really good music program. Right now I'm in band and the people are just amazing.
I'm Justin and I'm from Nassau, Bahamas. There's a lot more opportunities to participate in clubs after school and there's like more range of different courses to learn from.
And one of the most important things that we try and remember at all times is that all our students are welcome. We do this by offering them a wide array of programs. We have many, many clubs and many activities, opportunities to celebrate, opportunities to shine in our schools and outside of our schools.
I love the safe environment, the teacher, the students, my classmates are really nice and they always try to help me.
Vision of Catholic education is one of having Christ at the center of all that we do, of one that is inclusive, one that is infused with hope and joy and reflects the message of the gospel.
It's so important for our own students to learn about other countries and cultures because that leads to acceptance of one another and leads to, you know, harmony in a community.
Hi, my name is Sung Seung Lee. I'm from South Korea. There are so many people from other countries, which is most interesting for me because I like sharing our ideas for our life back in our countries.
My name is Hank and I moved here from China. My favorite part about Canada is probably the snow. Like I just love the winter, like all the activities you can do in the winter, like skating, skiing, snowboarding. I've had all those activities and they were so fun.
Hi, my name is Eos. I'm 16 years old and I'm from Germany, doing an exchange here in Canada. Here in Canada, we can pick and choose more classes and there's like also the more variety of classes that are more fun or more practical.
So last semester, my first period class was social justice and I really liked that class.
A, a lot of stuff is done digitally, so it's really efficient and I really like that. Not like that at my school, but.
Hi, my name is Danielle Pina and I'm an international student from Mexico City. They are really good friends that I have been here. They are from another country, so you can come here and make for like a lot of friends.
There's so much more nature everywhere and everyone is so welcoming and nice.
Studying in Canada helps you a lot with like being a parent by yourself.
In the beginning of every course, I was asked how to best accommodate me due to me not being a native speaker in English and taking into consideration that I need a bit more time learning like terms or different explanations because I'm new to the language.
We do not limit our acceptances to students that are of a Catholic faith. We welcome people of all faiths, all backgrounds, all races and religions.
The schools and the classrooms, the learning environment that we provide at the Halton Catholic District School Board are ones that are inclusive and safe and nurture the needs of all our learners. The heart of our schools is one that is based in relationship and based in honoring the diversity and the beauty and the wonder of all our learners.
Thank you. I will now open up the floor to trustees for questions.
Actually, the chair wasn't done mine.
Not done?
No, I was done my presentation. So I just want to report now on the past trip. In February, the HCSB participated in ICE of Dubai, an event that gathered 300 plus international education professionals and 230 plus agents representing families from 40 plus countries from Africa, the Middle East and other parts of Asia. A total of 31 one-to-one, sorry, 38 one-to-one meetings were held, resulting in the creation of 20 new agent agreements to date. Please refer to the chart on page two on the staff report for an overview of expenses related to the trip. The HCSB staff is recommending travel to three recruitment trips in 2025, 2026, the three being ICE of Paris in September, class education, Mexico City in February, and study abroad, Portugal in March. Each trip provides a unique opportunity to grow and the diversity of enrollment in our system. Please refer to the page, to the chart on page three of the staff report for a detailed projection of expenses for the proposed trips. All air travel is economy class and all hotel stays will be where the events take place with a standard room preset by the event organizers. So those are my recommendations, our staff recommendations for trips of next year. And that, the, the action report that will be put forth for your consideration will be presented on April 22nd or meeting. And at this point in time, this concludes my staff report. I welcome any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, superintendent Cordero. Trustees, any questions for superintendent Cordero? Trustee Kennedy?
Just one question. How many internationals?
Superintendent Cordero?
I don't know the year, the year previous to this current year. I think the current projection is 267 FTE through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. So 267, I think last year was, you know, maybe a dozen or so less than the current number. But we, I can honestly.
Can you send that number to trustees by email?
I, I think it was actually presented in the December, the November 19th report of how we've progressed over the years since pre-COVID. I, I can tell you that enrollment has gone up 600%, so sixfold since the peak prior to COVID-19 in the year 2018, 2019.
Thank you. Trustee Ohan Chanara? Or you had a follow up? One second, trustee Ohan Chanara.
Is, is there any limit to how many students? Like, do we turn anybody away? Is there any limit to, to how much, how many international students we can take?
Superintendent Cordero?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. There's no overall limit, but we do have caps based on use of facility and space available in our schools. So again, that's, there's an overall limit, but there are individual caps placed on schools, yes.
Thank you. I'll move to trustee Ohan Chanara. Trustee Ohan Chanara?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, superintendent Cordero. First of all, kudos to that video. That's a really nice video, really good, really kind of showcases our school board very well. My question, superintendent Cordero, is, and there was a lot of conversation last time when we go through these trips and, you know, we're almost, there was so much talk about budgets and finances and, you know, what, how do we, or what will we do moving forward to make sure that we know what our return on investment is for this $30, $31,000? How do we tie it? Do we tie it to any agreement as you referenced, or is there a way, or the board knows, hey, we went to these conferences and that's directly related to that particular conference?
Superintendent Cordero?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Ohan Sernota. It's very difficult to say that this group of students attend our schools currently as a result of this particular trip, because it is at the trips that you enter into agreements with agents who then represent. represent students. So for example, in this last trip where there were thirty-eight one-on-one meetings with agents, we ended up signing twenty agent agreements. Those twenty-eight agent agreements will then be taken by agents to promote our school board to families and students. It may result in one student in September, it may result in three, it might result in ten next year or five in February. Because you enter into the relationship at that point in time, you can draw reference to the agent agreement, but you can't draw reference to that particular point in time at that particular conference. Some agent agreements last fifteen, twenty years. Some agent agreements come to termination over a short period of time. I can honestly and transparently say that in my five years as superintendent with responsibilities over international student programs, none of our international agent agreements have come to termination during that period of time. And we probably have signed, let's say, at least a couple hundred agent agreements in those three years.
Thank you. Trustee Ohan Chanara?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Superintendent Cordero. So what I'm hearing is we can tie a new student to a particular agent, but we can't necessarily tie it to a particular conference. Agent agreement is, do I correct confirmation of understanding?
That is correct. That is correct, because the agent will be representing the family, the families, sometimes over six, seven, eight years. And it all, it all depends on the interests of families in that competitive market, you know, of different school boards showcasing different elements of their schools. And sometimes school boards grow and have more modern facilities. Sometimes schools adopt new programs that draw students in to their school districts. So you're exactly right. We can tie students to agent agreements, but we're not necessarily able to tie them to that specific conference.
Okay, so just an extra clarification, Mr. Chair, is is that, so I can say two hundred and sixty-seven students, say twenty of them were this agent, fifty were this agent, but I don't know when that all happened, but they're tied to other agents. You have that data. We could get that, right?
We can get, I believe we can get that data.
Thank you. Any other questions online? Trustee, trustee Kennedy?
Yeah, just a follow-up question. So you mentioned we have caps because of the schools. Is that because, like physically, or is it like the amount of teachers per students per teacher ratio? Like, the last presentation, I recall, this is a moneymaker, this is revenue, net revenue generator. So why do we have caps? Can we just, like, can we just get this program three times larger in the next three years? Is that possible?
Superintendent Cordero?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. This is really a staffing issue, and staffing sections and enrollment and caps really are really generated out of the planning department and conversation with those superintents responsible for staffing. I can let you know that a lot has to do, like any other program, like, for example, the AP program at Bishop Reading, when there reaches levels of capacity in the use of facility, it does put pressures on accessibility to that school or to those programs by students. Now, all the intricacies of how the caps are set and sections, I can't speak to that. That's really outside my realm.
Thank you. Superintendent Denalfo? Lieutenant Michael?
Sorry about that. Through you, Chair. Trustee Kennedy, with regards to international students and how, together with Planning Services, that determination where how many international students can go to one of our schools, be it elementary or secondary, it varies. So for elementary, what we're looking at is where do we have space in terms of not triggering having a new teacher added to the school? Because where the profit is from international students is not to trigger additional teachers. It's where we don't have like a full class, whatever the cap is, what ministry said for the guidelines. So that's how it works for elementary. For secondary, we have a couple of things to take into consideration. One is space. So we have, as you know, our high schools are all of them, most of them are at capacity. We have a couple that are not at capacity. That is a greater opportunity for the funds of international students to be a benefit to the board if we place those students where we're not at capacity. Okay? So then there becomes, together with Planning Services, where there's a dialogue about where we are opening spaces for international students. So some of our schools can no longer take because we're at capacity at those schools, and the students who are here in Ontario or here in Holy Catholic have, they have that opportunity to go to those schools first.
Superintendent Love?
Superintendent Love will actually cover most of it, but just the other part, too, is like, I think of HT, for example. There's a school that's really, really because of the North at its capacity and the ability to even add portables and stuff like that, too, comes into play. So that that facilities factors into it as well. Superintendent Love will touch on that as well. So I forgot my mic was still on.
Yeah. And and trustee Kennedy, I have received questions from parents asking, why are we taking students in a particular school when they're already at capacity? So so we have questions coming from parents too. When you're at capacity, it's a decision made by staff, and we need to think about that. Okay, I have no other questions here. So thank you, Superintendent Cordero, for presenting your report. We shall move on to our next order of business, which is information item, Director's Report eleven point one. Director Klein?
All right. Well, you know, we've been moving at quite a pace, so I'm hoping we'll just slow things down, okay? For the next little while, just relax, put your feet up. We're going to just take our time as we walk through this. Actually, there's a lot of information within the Director's Report, and as is my want, I really want to feature all the good things that we're doing within our board. So I will skip through some things, but I will try and land on a few, particularly as they regards to to staff. The PISA assessments are, again, it's not a town in Italy, and it's not something we might all want to be eating right now. A PISA is a a common assessment for fifteen-year-olds that is undertaken by OECD country participants. Canada's obviously one of them, every three and now in an ongoing way, four years. It's important that we understand that not not withstanding the fact that a parent or trustee might have a student or a ratepayer's child or one of our student trustees in one school, it's important to know that they're part of a network of schools, not only here at Halton, but within the province of Ontario, and that there are commonalities amongst all the provinces and territories of of this country. And of course, we have connections to other parts of the world. And not withstanding the fact, there's also great differences and distinctions in all those communities. There are commonalities. And what PISA tries to do is with the, you know, the the three Rs plus math, is try and get a sense of how our students around the world are doing. We have two high schools that would be participating in it, just because of the restrict and true EQAO, providing the the wake that EQAO has in terms of leading these assessments. They'll be doing that this year. We use technology to do it. The the result, there's nothing going home to mom and dad, nothing going home to the schools. This is used in terms of kind of a pulse check about how we're nationally.
Is now joining.
Where we go within the world itself. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say that Canada traditionally does quite well in this. Samsung, the company I've spent a lot of money on over the years, has, as you know, many companies do, they also have a initiatives where they try and support schools, try and support learning and communities. And we wanted to highlight the fact that Bishop Reading has a team of students that has reached sort of the the next level or plateau of the competition within something called Solve for Tomorrow. And the themes of that are sustainability, focusing on equity-seeking groups, and health. And those students have worked very hard to create what's an app called a smart cycle. And then they move on to the next phase, where they would get some coaching from experts in the field, and then they will be able to, again, hopefully do even better at the provincial and then national levels. And then there is obviously money that is possibly going toward that school and that team as well, not just the the fame fortune. Jubilee Cross, it seems maybe like a long time ago, but we were here just for Christmas. We had a beautiful liturgy here, and for many, it probably reminded us of just as COVID began, where we had a cross that was moving from school community to school community, started where we left off there, and it moved along. And again, this is an opportunity for not only the schools to participate, but for trustees again to see how we are proactively raising the cross high and again, and again, testifying publicly to the the power of the resurrection in all its forms. We have, over the years, around this time, received a letter from the Canadian Cancer Society. The Canadian Cancer Society wrote us again to thank us from the bottom of their hearts for the work that our schools have done in raising money, particularly in the Relay for Life, which would have been in the fall. And together, the school communities in our board raised two hundred and eighty thousand plus for that. And that is something to be, I think, celebrated for something that I think all of us would agree has probably touched every one of our families, and all of us have stories of that regard. And I think it's another example of how these Catholic schools have and continue to have to contribute to the broader community. IB program continues to unfold. Just a little update that we did have some of the the people who oversee that from Europe come here to take a look, see what's, how things are unfolding at Saint Ceteri. And the consultation report, again, just indicated that there's areas that they're making progress in, areas maybe that they could work a little further in, because we're at what's known as the candidate phase. And of course, we work together with Superintendent Kroll and his staff to ensure that we are faithful again to the mandate of the IB program. The next steps are there for you, and the first teaching of IB program will be in September of two thousand twenty-six, and we look forward to that. Diocesan pilgrimage for youth mass. Again, just another opportunity to say, because, you know, time is going in this regard, we are so lucky, so blessed to have, again, the great teacher of the faith, Bishop Crosby, as the as the shepherd for our diocese. And again, every time we do something with Bishop, you wonder if this could be one of our last occasions for him as he's has put in his retirement to the Holy Father. We were asked to send some students to the Basilica, to the cathedral, about a week and a half ago for Ash Wednesday, and those students came from St. Ignatius of Loyola and St. Matthew, a few staff as well, celebrated. Obviously, we had the ashes and the and the commission. The bishop himself, again, very, very comfortable with our youth, talked them about the Paschal mystery and about the fact that, given the fact that we all know that we're mortal and that our time on earth is limited, again, to challenge the youth, and of course, the not-so-youth, about then what are the choices we are making in how we dedicate our lives. I would like to find, to end this by highlighting someone special. We've done this the last couple of reports, and we highlight people who are special by no means to say that, you know, they're specialer than others. But I did want to highlight the fact that particularly when we we know that it takes all sorts of professions and paraprofessions, workers in this board to move, to to create the wonders that we have here, social workers. In this regard, we want to talk about Jacqueline Davis. And the first part of March is Social Work Week, and then March is National Social Work Month. And the Ontario Association of Social Workers featured stories of individual social workers who have made a difference. And Jacqueline was one of those exceptional professionals highlighted. And just I want to highlight one thing from that and also echo the fact, we're very blessed to have Jacqueline and others who work to ensure the well-being and the success of our students. I'll just end with what she had noted in kind of a bio, because I think this reflects on not only what she believes in, but with what we would hope that we would all believe in here. "In my view, honoring the experiences of Black and racialized students is not just an act of recognition, it is a necessity for fostering true equity in education. First and foremost, I work from an anti-racist lens, using a respectful, non-biased approach to support advocacy and to be a voice for the marginalized and oppressed. Social work means inclusion, respect, integrity, and compassion. This work is extremely gratifying. I appreciate being able to support someone through their most challenging and vulnerable times and witnessing the self-determination and resilience they discover." So hopefully, this is not only a a celebration for what Jacqueline does, but for all our employees do, and of course, to highlight social workers that not only help our students, but I can tell you that it provide a lot of light of hope for families and for staff very often as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Klein, for presenting your report. Trustees, any questions for Director Klein? Saying none. Thank you, Director Klein. We shall move on to item eleven point two. Halton Student Transportation Services, HSTS, an annual home-to-school transportation review. Superintendent Loft, please present your report.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Good evening again, everyone. Attaches the annual home-to-school transportation review, which was approved at the February twentieth, two thousand twenty-five HSTS Board of Directors meeting. The only change impacting our board, and this has an impact at St. Dominic's, was a reevaluation by HSTS, and we've added back in an additional stop that originally was taken away back, and I believe it was in two thousand twenty-three. So these, this community is within the one point six kilometers, so typically, they would not be eligible for busing. Having said that, it's been reexamined, and they have now been put back on busing. So in the past couple of years, they've been getting the courtesy seats. So now going forward, courtesy seats will not be required. They'll just have their stop. So that is the only change, Mr. Chair, and it's good news for our community.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. Trustees, any questions for Superintendent Loft online? Trustee Carabella?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have the whole report here, but I know when I was reading it, one of the qualifications was that they had no crossing guard. But what does that mean, that they that they need one, or they?
Superintendent here through you to trustee Carabella. It was, they're at it, there's a stoplight there. This is my understanding of it with the with the town of Oakville, but there was no crossing guard there. So initially, when it was thought that they could be, they could walk to school within that one point six, that there was a crossing guard. After further investigation, they found out there wasn't a crossing guard there. So which is why we put them back on the busing, the buses, and they won't have to apply for courtesy. I believe they've done, the families have done after the last couple of years, we're able to accommodate them anyways. But this should be good news for the families, because they don't have to worry about this anymore.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Carabella. Any other trustees' questions? Saying none. Thank you, Superintendent Loft, for your report. We move on to item eleven point three, extensive trip advisory committee report. Report is in our package. Superintendent Loft, would you like to speak very briefly to this? I'm very cognizant of the time, so. Sorry, Superintendent Cordero? We have the report in our package, so I'd like to speak very briefly to this, so.
Yeah, I will. Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to present. On February twenty-six, the Extensive Trip Advisory Committee met and approved the travel to Orlando, Florida, from April twenty-fifth to the thirtieth, of eleven students and five teachers, representing five different Halton Catholic District School Board secondary schools, where the students will compete in the DACA International Career Development Conference. A summary of travel details is found in the Information Report appendices. HDSB students continue to excel in a variety of educational programs, demonstrating their ability to successfully compete at the highest levels provincially, nationally, and internationally. We wish the eleven HDSB students the very best as they enter. We wish the eleven HDSB students the very best as they enter the competition of twenty-three thousand participants and seek post-secondary opportunities for continued growth and achievement.
Thank you. Uh trustees, any questions for Superintendent Cordero online? We have had some good successes. I think student trustee Philbert, uh she was part of the DACA group, yeah, so congratulations to her for doing well. Uh and thank you for the report. Uh we shall now move on to our next order of business is miscellaneous information, twelve point one, student trustee update. Students, please present your report.
Thank you through you, Chair. Um just to get this done quickly, I'm just gonna hop right into achieving um our achieving pillar. So um through our system, um secondary school first robotics teams have begun their competition seasons. Um so recently, many of the HDSB teams went to the Newmarket District event from February twenty eighth to March second. And here, our teams competed with other robotics teams from other provinces in many challenges, and of course, they had great success. So this year's challenge was focused on the ocean and keeping the ocean healthy. So teams were challenged to create a robot that could um incorporate pieces of coral, which was represented through um pipes, and then they would connect those to um branches called the reef. Um so at the event, many of our HDSB teams saw great success, as I mentioned. Um the Loyola Firehawks Robotics Team placed fourth overall and qualified for future events, so great job to them. And then the um Holy Trinity Tronic Titans and the Bishop Reading Robotics Team also did were present and did a great job in all their events. So when speaking to students who are part of these teams, many students describe how enriching and transformational robotics is. Um Sophia Curros, a member of the DRIVE team and mechanical fabrications lead um for the Loyola Firehawks, said that being on the robotics team has helped her to become more confident and outgoing. And she's able to gain skills um that she's not able to in the traditional classroom. She also loves to support a community that robotics fosters and that the fact that teams are able to work together um even though they also compete against each other. So um I just want to say that we're all really proud of um these teams and we wish them the best of luck for the rest of their season. And so moving on to the believing pillar. Um in the weeks leading up to March break, as we all know, um students came together to celebrate special school events, um like enjoying enjoying pancakes on Shrove Tuesday. Um this gathering, of course, is more than just a meal. It marks our preparation for the forty days of Lent, a time of reflection and community. So on Ash Wednesday, we held meaningful masses at our schools, inviting students to contemplate on their personal commitments for Lent and participate in receiving the ashes on their foreheads. So this gesture uh reminds us of our shared humanity and our collective journey in acknowledging all of our wrongs. So as we move through this Lenten season, students are continuing um continue to be encouraged to help each other deepen their faith and strive to become the best versions of themselves, um supporting each other along the way. So I'll hand it off to Sophia to do the rest.
Thank you. And as Isabel mentioned, we will keep this super short. As you can see, belonging is quite short and that is because Ms. Akeisha and Ms. Gonzalez did touch upon the Black Student Symposium that happened in February. But from a student perspective, we just wanted to reiterate how valuable that experience was for Black students. A lot of students have mentioned specifically that Black History Month is often focused solely on the history and the arts that people tend to it's very important to learn about, but for Black students can be very exhausting. So a lot of students did appreciate having a chance to celebrate Black joy, Black excellence. There's a bunch of students from the school board in such a variety of ways that was seen through workshops. Um additionally, for becoming, I have the pleasure of being able to attend the STEAM Day that occurred at Saint Francis Xavier um just earlier this month. And all students um with STEAM at their schools and those interested from elementary schools going to high schools with STEAM had the opportunity to present different games, different research, um everything across the science, technology, engineering, arts, and math sector. Um a lot of STEAM clubs did mention their focus on continuing to innovate and create community-based products. So using STEAM and their knowledge to give back to the community. Overall, it was a great day for connection and innovation and students really appreciated the opportunity um to not only expand their STEAM skills, but also connect with members of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Philbert. Trustees, do we have any questions for the student trustees? My computer is just restarting, so I can't really see. Okay, if not, uh, thank you, student trustees for presenting your report. And one second. We shall now move on to item twelve twelve point two OCSD update, trustee Ohan Chanara. Uh are you, do you have a verbal update?
I do. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Very verbal update. Next on the plate is the AGM that's coming May first and second, so to those trustees that have registered, that's that is where all the rest of the things that will be presented. And that's where we lobby with education with the help of BOKTA to get some additional funding, which we've touched on many, many times this year. So uh next event will be the AGM May first and second.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. Trustees, any questions for trustee Ohan Chanara? Saying none. Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara for presenting your uh report. Uh we move on to correspondences. We have none. Open question period. Director Klein, do we have any questions submitted? Thank you, Director Klein. Uh we move on to item number fifteen, which is in camera. We have to go into in camera. So I will now ask for a motion to move in camera. Looking for a mover, please. Trustee Carabella moves. Looking for a seconder.
I'll second it.
The trustee Mur- uh Vashia Murphy? Okay, Vashia Murphy. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Saying none. Motion carries. We shall now move in camera. We have one item uh here, which uh is is a matter where. Yeah, I'm asking.